Good afternoon, everyone. The time is now 1:08 PM and a quorum of the board is present. The State Board of Education meeting of March 12th, 2019 is called to order. And Marilyn, I believe that we have individuals who wish to address the board today.
We do. I have got a stack here. If anybody else has a Green Public Participation Form, please get that to me as soon as possible so you can have an opportunity to speak. I'll let you know that each person will be allowed five minutes and the board does not engage in a back-and-forth conversation at this point. You may be contacted at a later date, but just so you know the expectations. I'm going to tell you who is speaking and I'm going to tell you who is next. And if you just come to the end of the table, thank you. That would be great. And if you have any handouts, if you pass it to the person closest to you, they're happy to pass them around the table. Okay. So, our first speaker is Sharice Butler, followed by Helen Moore.
Good afternoon to Board President Ulrich and members of the board and Superintendent Alice. My name is Sharice Butler and I'm just here on behalf of Detroit Public Schools Community District, wanting to introduce myself. We have a newly-formed government relations team. And so I'll be here in Lansing attending the House and Senate Education Committee meetings, as well as the State Board of Education Committee meetings. And so I look forward to working with you all over the next several years and you'll hopefully hear more from us. Thank you.
Our second speaker is Helen Moore, followed by Marletta Seets.
Most of you have seen me before. I've been active over 45 years in Detroit Public Schools. Started off with Black Parents for Quality Education, organized a coalition of Keep the Vote, No Takeover, and I'm representing Keep the Vote, No Takeover today, and also National Action Network as their state director. Also Journey for Justice Alliance out of Chicago, so I have a lot of hats. But the main hat that I have is for our children in the city of Detroit, and I have fought for their rights and for their quality education all my life. I have four children that graduated from Cass Tech. I graduated from Commerce High School, and I went to Detroit Wayne State University and Detroit College of Law. I'm here today to talk about the problems that we're having with the many takeovers that are happening in black and brown school districts, especially in the state of Michigan. Right now, I've been asked to come and help the Benton Harbor School District out because it's similar to what's happened in Detroit Public Schools. The irreparable harm that has taken place is very difficult for us to mend. And when you have irreparable harm and you have children that have all these terrible problems that have happened during the emergency manager and the takeover, and one of the emergency managers, who happened to be a friend of mine before he became emergency manager, told me that the reason he was there was to tear up the public school system, and he definitely did that. And some of the others who had no experience as educators caused us to have harm of over $2 billion that we owe now, where you had to split the system into the money part and the curriculum part. Our children are suffering. We lost a lot of the enrollment because the parents were not given the kind of power that some of the suburban school systems have, and we were left with no rights in the city of Detroit. Now we've sued and we've gone through a lot of stages, and we're at the point now that we have our elected board back. Not as strong as it was before the takeover, but we're getting there. We have recently asked Dr. Viti to work with the community, to get the community back in the school system, and we're working on that third-grade retention law. We have organized over 500 retired teachers. We're going in the school system probably next week. We've organized the parents and the students, and we're moving ahead. We're not letting anything stop us. Now, if you know the history of Detroit Public Schools and what we went through over the years when we were taken over, you will see that that is a lesson for all of us. Never, never take over a school system that is predominantly black and brown, because when you do, you leave them with the ashes that you caused, and you have to start all over and build another school system, which puts us behind financially and curriculum-wise and everything that a school system should have, as some of your systems have. We want the same thing for our children. In fact, we probably want equity, because that means that we've been mistreated all these years. And if you want to make the system equal, as some of us say, then you must give the system that was mistreated more money, more resources, and you must look at what the harm that you have caused that system in order to mend the problems that we are facing in Detroit Public Schools. Now Benton Harbor is like our child. There we heard about Benton Harbor, and we've met several times with them. We do not want them to go through what we've gone through. By the grace of God, we've been able to build our system back over, up and work together. In fact, there's a school board meeting today. I don't have to get up and raise hell all the time and get thrown in jail, like I've been doing, done for 45 years. But there's a method in my madness. It gets attention, and then the people begin to talk about the issues. So I'm not as crazy as you all might think I am. I know exactly what I'm doing, and I've been trained by some very wonderful people from the Student Advocacy Center, Ruth Zeifler, and you probably know all of these different groups, and we've worked together for many years. So I'm just here to say caution. Don't destroy Benton Harbor like some of the other black and brown school systems, like Inkster, for instance. You know, state took all of their schools, and they don't have any. We fought for 18 years to get our Detroit Public School elected board back, and we're still fighting. We want you to understand that once you destroy a school system, you destroy a neighborhood. You put in charters, you destroy a neighborhood. Thank you very much for listening, and I'll be back.
The next speaker is Marletta Seets, followed by Russ Ballant.
Good afternoon, and thank you for this opportunity. My name is Marletta Seets, of course. Former school board president and currently serving on the superintendent's advisory board. I am the individual who signed the cooperative agreement, and immediately after signing the cooperative agreement, it was great regret that we were put in that position. And since that time, I had sent several letters to the state, to SRO, have met with one of the AGs, with the Michigan Department of Education, with other board members, one that is not currently serving, and we talked about the undue influence that went along with signing the cooperative agreement. We presented a letter from the Department of Treasury, and which represented unreasonable pressure, and that we feel like we were taken advantage of, and that it was under undue duress, and we had unequal bargaining power. And we asked that at that time, because the person that was put in place, that they would consider the fact that this individual did not want to adhere to the letter of the cooperative agreement, and to date has not. I do serve, again as I stated, on the superintendent's advisory board. I have not been invited to one meeting, yet they have had several, a couple meetings. They just had a meeting the other day. And the other individual that was also put on that meeting committee was not invited either. But yet, they met with several people in the community, several businesses, to talk about turning the district into a charter school. I have several calls that have been made to the State Board of Education with no return phone calls. We had the attorney to talk to several people concerning the gross negligence from the individual who is there now, as far as meeting with the board, refused to meet with the board before December. We had several meetings, which we were trying to come to an understanding of what the cooperative agreement should look like. And although they were invited, they told the state that they never received the invitation. We have the data to prove that they did. We also realized that now they're trying to put board members together. Benton Harbor is a very small community. He is rallying board members to serve on the charter board. He's just hired someone from Florida, and the administrative team is larger almost than the teachers, and the money is just continually being spent down. My question is, we've done a lot of data, and a 2000 state senator asked that a CEO be put in Benton Harbor. It was refused. Now we're at a CEO. Who is, who is watching and monitoring what is actually going on in Benton Harbor? I know people don't want to be bothered with Benton Harbor, and the thing that they think that they should do is control Benton Harbor and tell them what to do, make us stay in our lane. We stayed in our lane, and when we had to get out of our lane, we found out that I don't believe that nobody at the state has real information of what really happened to bring us to that cooperative agreement. We did ask the AG, after a three-hour meeting, to please do an investigation, because what has been told is not the truth. There were things that should have been prosecuted, and to date have not even went to the prosecutor's office. There were documents that were shredded, and admitted they were shredded, in Title IX violations. But yet Benton Harbor always has to be under an agreement, and the people that they put there are never accountable to anything. They don't do reports, they don't come to the meetings. And I want to say in closing, in the Bible, Solomon was brought before a situation where there was two women that had babies. One died and one was alive. And the woman that said, "Cut the baby in half," had no invested interest. And I think that's where we're at in Benton Harbor. Nobody has an invested interest in the city of Benton Harbor, in the school district of Benton Harbor. The taxpayers do, people whose kids have been raised in Benton Harbor, and the state is saying, and the gentleman that is in place is saying, "Cut the baby in half." And I'm saying to this board, someone needs to do their homework. Quit taking what you hear if you don't have the evidence to validate it, because we do have the evidence to say that what you're hearing is not a true statement. Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Russ Ballant, followed by Joseph Taylor.
Good afternoon. It's been a few years since I've been here, but I, I was alarmed when I heard about the conduct of the SRO regarding Benton Harbor schools. I was, I was at the meeting when Buena Vista was dissolved. I've been part of the fight against state control of the Detroit Public Schools since I have been at board meetings of Madison Heights School when they got a letter from the state of Michigan saying, "You have been in serious financial deficit for 18 years." There was no mention of an emergency manager. There was no mention of a state takeover. They told them to just address the problem. 18 years. Detroit Public Schools in 19, that was from 1991 on. Detroit Public Schools in 1999 had a $93 million surplus, and the state saw fit to take it over. We, and we all have our understanding as to why they did it. Had nothing to do with academics, because test scores were rising. Enrollment was rising every year in the 1990s, but they still took it over, because they wanted to. There's such a glaring discrepancy between how white school districts and black school districts are treated. And no matter how successful the black school district has been, and Detroit had a lot of success to talk about, and it had a lot of problems and challenges, as all school districts do. We had some of the best high schools in the United States in the city of Detroit. We had so many things going for us, and yet everyone stood by and allowed the Constitution to be violated by allowing the legislature to usurp the powers of this state board of education and start running a school district, based on a model that one dictator is better than the elected system. What I'm hearing from Benton Harbor is a repeat, a continuing repeat of the pattern of what this state of Michigan has done to black school districts, from the dissolution of Buena Vista, the dissolution of Inkster, what's going on in the Adrian schools, Ekor schools, and Detroit schools in Flint. There is a different standard, and we need all people to come together and say, "We're one Michigan, we're one standard. We're not going to accept anything along the lines of second-class citizenship for the people of our cities that happen to be majority black." I was at the meeting when the emergency manager, Roy Roberts, said, "I was sent here to blow up the Detroit Public Schools by the governor." What do you think we feel? What do you think that means for our children? How can anybody stand by and allow taxpayer money and opportunist politicians and wealthy donors who are behind the scenes to destroy a public school system and destroy the future of tens of thousands, and in our case, well over 100,000 children? It's unacceptable. And I think everybody in Lansing needs to get a message, and you're, we would like you to be one of the messengers, saying, "We're not going to do double standards anymore. We're not going to destroy the future for these children." Where are the resources to help stop the decline that's happened in Benton Harbor under five years of state control? The state of Michigan did not care that every emergency manager added $100 million of debt, starting with Robert Bob. I'm nonpartisan on this issue, friends. I don't care whether a Democrat appointed him or a Republican appointed him. They were debt creators, they were looters. Some of you know I wrote a paper and gave it to the media, and I gave it to a lot of other people in this board, about the looting that happened under Robert Bob. Newspapers started working on it, and every reporter and news media outlet was ordered to get off the story. There's not accountability, there's not a system of accountability, not in the press, not in the legislative bodies, not in elected or the unelected fields. We need the people who care about education to stand up. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Joseph Taylor, followed by Thomas Pedroni.
All right. Good evening. I'm Joseph Taylor, Board Vice President, Benton Harbor Area Schools. I used to be Board President as well. I'm here today just to give you some backdrop, right? So Benton Harbor Area Schools is about 30 to 40 miles long, so it's not in the city of Benton Harbor, because a lot of people think that it's in the city of Benton Harbor. The city of Benton Harbor is a four-by-four platform. I'm from Benton Charter Township. It's 34 miles long, so there's a difference, right? You have poverty, you have middle class, upper class, makes up the entire school district. So we went into a cooperative agreement back in July of 2018. Since then, there has been no cooperation with our CEO-slash-supervisor. I have yet to receive a email updating us on budgets, right? The financials, or any educational entities that go on into the district. So you have to think about that, right? So that's a one-sided communication, right? There's lack of communication, because cooperation means to cooperate, right? So there seems to be none. All of a sudden, we go to a board meeting three weeks ago. It was a board retreat, and the superintendent stated, "There's a financial emergency." And I stated, "What emergency?" "We have to do something by spring," right? So they want to do something by spring break. Think about that. What's that about? What can you do from now to spring break, right? And I think the underlying issue is that because of the law that was enacted, the superintendent-slash-CEO understands that the board will gain local control June 30th, right? And so they want to do something pretty fast. And what you have to understand, there's always a hand that controls the hand. Sometimes you don't see that other hand, right? But you just see us, right? And you see the rumors and innuendos about what goes on, and what's went right and what's went wrong. So the fact of the matter is, no emergency. We just passed our TAN, our Tax Anticipation Note. We have to go before the loan board, right? Just to kind of rearrange our loans. It's kind of like all of us, right? We're all in deficit. We all have houses, we all have cars, you owe things, right? And so sometimes we have to rearrange things in order to make sure that our cash flow is legit. When the, when the Board of Education initiated our budget in June of 2018, our budget showed a forecast of a loss of over 140 students, because every year we've been dropping 5%. That's what the data tells us. So we put that into our budget. Well, if that's into our budget, right? Now our budget has been mismanaged, because the board didn't control the budget. The board was unaware of the budget, okay? So just to give you some insight on that. So if the board creates a budget, that's approved by an entity that the Department of Treasury brought in, that entity, to do the cash flow, the balance of the budget, and the creation of the budget. Now all of a sudden, it's an emergency. Think about that, right? This is like Sherlock Holmes, right? What's the mystery? Where did this happen? How did this happen? So we just wanted to give you guys some insight, because a lot of times, when we're on the outside looking in, the only thing we know is media, right? You've been told that we've had, we've gotten rid of five superintendents. How so? When did we do that, right? Last superintendent resigned. One superintendent went to jail for 90 days, right? For misappropriations. That's not on the board. That's on the criminal, right? It's not on us. And when you think about an entity such as yourself, right? If your superintendent's not doing his or her job, you should remove them, right? If they're, if they're impeding education, if they're stopping students and taxpayers from get, for, you know, getting the best bang for the buck, I think you have a right to. I'm an, I'm an engineer in at Whirlpool Corporation, right? And if something happens, we remove people, right? Nobody says, "Oh, you guys removed one person, two person." That shouldn't even be a part of the conversation. The conversation should be, "How do we help impact and educate our students, no matter what side of the state they're from, no matter what color they are?" And it seems that this is a misappropriation of color, right? Because in the black and brown communities, that's where we see the takeover. So I'm employing you guys, asking you, do your homework, right? Work with your heart, not just with your pens, not just with your hearsay, right? Because today, we heard some good financial information, and from that financial information, the guy told you 75% of all these school districts, right, are losing students, right? It's not just us. It's 75% of the districts in the state of Michigan. And so I hope that you guys will rethink all of your past thoughts, and come to 2019 and see what's going on in all districts of color, and especially Benton Harbor Area School, because we want to remain a public school and do what's right for our community. Thank you so much for your time.
Our next speaker is Thomas Pedroni, followed by Derek Lopez.
Hi, everyone. My name is Thomas Pedroni, and I'm an associate professor of Curriculum Studies at Wayne State University, and I've been researching urban public school districts in Michigan for about 15 years now. So, board members, and interim superintendent Sheila Ailes, I think you would agree that the state has had a rather poor track record in the last five to 10 years protecting the educational well-being of African-American students in our urban public schools. To a significant degree, we've let the damage happen to our state's children, because we blamed local school boards and the schools they govern for the financial hardships and the academic challenges that they faced. That is, we've blamed local communities for our state's failed policies. The state created Proposal A, which starved urban public schools of the financial resources they needed, and we created so-called accountability systems based on test scores that branded urban public schools as failing, either threatening to directly shut down schools for poor tests or hanging the albatross of failure around children and their schools. We, as a state, use test scores as a wrecking ball, despite decades of cumulative research that said, "Test scores don't measure school performance, but merely reflect the socioeconomic status of the families that use urban schools." Through the twin cudgels of allegations of financial failure and academic failure, we allowed the districts of Buena Vista and Inkster to be dissolved in their entirety. We allowed for-profit companies like Mosaic and Leona Group to take over the entire school district in Muskegon Heights and Highland Park, who then jettisoned those districts in part or in whole when those companies did not realize enough profits for our children. Based on misplaced blame for financial and academic failure, we allowed emergency managers to decimate the public schools of Detroit. Thankfully, it's a new day in Michigan. We are finally recognizing the ways we have underfunded urban public schools, and Gretchen Whitmer's educational budget recognizes that. And with the state's board's dashboards, we've recognized that so-called accountability was actually a mechanism for gravely impairing the educational well-being of urban children in public schools. In some ways, we might say that the mechanisms currently at play to dispossess the people of Benton Harbor, of their school district, is like the last runaway train car of a failed system of financial and academic oversight that we now disavow. Benton Harbor was under a consent agreement for four years, but was released from that consent agreement despite continuing financial challenges in 2018. Nevertheless, before the consent agreement was dissolved, Benton Harbor Area Schools were strong-armed to accept an SRO-imposed CEO in order for the Treasury to allow the board to fire an unsatisfactory superintendent, since that needed Treasury's approval under the consent agreement. Now that CEO is telling the people of Benton Harbor that the only practical solutions are charterization, dissolution, or annexation. We know the dire consequences of those solutions. We know that state imposition only further harms districts. I encourage this board to operate as a true partner to Benton Harbor Area Schools through supporting their efforts to right wrongs inflicted largely by failed state policy. The SRO is under your power. You can determine whether or not Benton Harbor is allowed to chart out its future for its children with your support. Thanks.
Our next speaker is Derek Lopez.
Good afternoon. I just want to make sure that I'm setting that the expectations are correct. I thought it was 10 minutes, not 5. Okay.
10 minutes?
Okay. So, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Derek Lopez. Good afternoon to the board members. First, a few acknowledgements. First, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak about Team Flint. There are a lot of great things happening in Flint. I want to personally thank Dr. Pamela Pugh, who is the State Board of Education Vice President, for inviting me to speak about our work, because it's really important work. It is the work that really will move children and achievement. I became acquainted with Dr. Pugh through her work around the water crisis. It is really, really important for us to continue to do that work, and she has been a champion for the children and families of Flint. And so I really appreciate her invitation to speak with you all today about the work of Flint. I also want to thank the Michigan Department of Education. It doesn't happen often, because they've worked alongside us since, in my seven months as the superintendent of Flint Schools. Prior to my arrival, in the Flint Community Schools, our Board of Education did enter into a partnership agreement with the Krim Fitness Foundation, with the Mott Foundation, with NACISD, and with the Michigan State University, and the Concerned Passages of Flint, to work together to really develop a plan of action around the work that we must do in Flint. And so since the inception of that agreement, I have to say that the state has worked hand in glove with us. It has not been a challenge at all for us. I would be remiss if I did not thank Dr. Luanne Shelton, Deputy Superintendent Kyle Garant, and Stephen Curry, who is our partnership liaison. He literally has worked with us around every issue that has faced us since I arrived in Mar, in August, I'm sorry. And so the work there really does work, when in fact there is communication that is actually instituted by both sides, and communication works well. Finally, there are state of Michigan persons who I must thank also, because Shelby Freire at the Department of Treasury has really bent over backwards to help us solve some of the financial issues that arose before I arrived. And so we've really worked to balance our budget this coming year with her hand in glove. And certainly, State Senator Jim Ananik. He really has been a partner with us around our infrastructure. And Senator Jim Thomas took, Senator Thomas, the Department of Appropriations Chair, took a meeting with us to really talk about our infrastructure issues in Flint. And so all of those things really, really do matter when we're trying to really right the ship of what has happened in urban districts over time. So, let's move forward with respect to what I've prepared for you in the binder. So if you would take, open, take your binder and open it up, and just take out all of the documents before tab one, on the right side. All of them before tab one on the right side, because we're going to walk through them fairly quickly. I have seven minutes left. I actually timed my minutes, so I know that we're on, so that we can work through them. I want to talk to you about the work. So, as a superintendent, the work of transforming a school district with historical challenges is one of adaptive change. It's not something that happens overnight. This requires diligent and painstaking look at the systems that are there and the lack thereof, to move all the challenges with all deliberate speed as the superintendent. So the challenges that face most urban school districts didn't happen overnight, and therefore they must be addressed in a systematic way. And so what I provided with you in the binder is a toolkit that we're using in Flint for the work that we're doing to affirmatively address the issues that are present in our district. So on the left side of the binder, I didn't ask you to look at that. So on the left side of the binder, I didn't ask you to look at that, there's my four-legged stool. That's what I'm looking to do, that's the work that I've actually engaged in with my board. The four-legged stool includes our MDE partnership agreement, the Michigan Department of Treasury work around our budget, the work of infrastructure that I'm working with Senator Ananik and the state appropriations people about, and our innovation around our new junior high school in the city of Flint. That's for your later reading, not right now. But then, what I want to talk with you about is what's happening with the whole school, whole child, whole community model that you all have adopted as a model for what's working in the state. So this is what we're talking about here. So when a district works to transition the work of our schools, it's one of not business, but one of human capital to human capital. It is not about widgets. It is about making sure that the humans involved in the work really do, are empowered to do the work. And so basically, you have to really figure out how to balance that content, what's happening in the academic classroom, with the connections that are necessary for us to be successful with our kids. The whole school, whole community, whole child model does that work. It really does help us to balance what connection and content means about developing human relationships for students. That's really the work of the Flint Community Schools moving forward. And so Yuri Broffenbrenner, and that's this document here, talked about this in 1979. Kids are actually nested in four systems. Nested in home first, their family second, peers third, and community fourth, and school fourth. School is the only artificial construct. School, when the schools do not match the community in which they sit, as far as the expectations are concerned, there is a mismatch. There is not, kids are not available to learn, is what James Comer talks about. He talks about the fact that their Maslow needs are not met at all, when in fact, they're drinking life through a fire hose. When they're not able and available to learn and to move, it's because their base needs are not met. And so we have to figure out how to really catalyze and move forward the school community to make sure that that work works better for kids and families, as opposed to simply talking about the stuff in a vacuum. And so the whole school, whole community model, if you look at that center blue diagram on this space here, there are 10 tenants involved in that space. Health education, community involvement, family engagement, employee wellness, physical environment, social and school emotional climate, counseling, psychological and social services, health services, nutrition environment and services, and physical education and physical activity. So basically, it is those things that you have to work together, which school districts are notoriously bad partners, to work together with community organizations to really work on those 10 systems in your schools to really work and make that happen. And that means you have to share time, trust, and turf, which are hard things when you have an accountability system to the state around grades and the grading system and the work of schools. But you literally have to pause and talk through this with respect to the MDE partnership agreement, about how you navigate those things. And so what I would say to you is that, in fact, that is the work of the whole school, whole community, whole child model. And so what we did in Flint is we literally started thinking about those 10 tenants. So you actually have this 10, this document here that actually is a staple document behind that space. So we looked at those 10 tenants, beginning in our October retreat. What do those 10 tenants mean? How are they being actualized in the district? And how would we mobilize resources to make sure that that happens? Those 10 tenants really do matter, because in some instances, they actually overlap in work and services that we're doing, and other places, they don't. But you literally have to think about those things strategically and systematically, not just simply from a formal space, but an operational space. How do we put those things in our buildings each and every day to grow and develop the space that we need to? So that's that blue PowerPoint that you have there. That PowerPoint talks about moving from the formal to the operational to the relational systems that are necessary for kids and families to be working together collaboratively with these organizations to work that through. That is the work of the whole school, whole community, whole child model in a nutshell. Literally convening folk who actually are involved in the work of all of those social services in a room to talk through what priorities we're going to have as a district to make sure that those things are in place, and then working alongside those systems to really make sure that they work for our kids and families at the center. Rehumanizing school is really the purpose of that whole system. And as you seek to do that work from a policy standpoint, it requires you to do it with particularity and specificity around the work. Be intentional about it. Don't just think it's going to happen overnight. Literally meet and meet and meet and meet again until you actually have an understanding of the shared goals and responsibilities that are necessary for us to do the work. That's how we solved the water fountain issue, not the water crisis. The water fountain issue and the water station issue in Flint is because Dr. Pugh convened a group of people to meet regularly around the issue, the one issue. Not all the superfluous things that are there, but the one issue until we came to a resolution. And that's the work of what we have to do as a whole school, whole community. I'm going to end by saying the following. So literally, we have this March partnership agreement. We actually have our work with the Treasury that is a challenge. I'm not going to deny that that work of budgeting is a challenge. We have the work of infrastructure that is really a challenge within our district, and we actually have to move our district forward. So what I would say to you all, as the board and as members of the community here in the MDE, as our partners, that we really still have a lot of work to do. This is just the beginning of that work, and the thought work is that powerful work. The MDE liaison, our new Paul Schumer, is critical to our work. He's invaluable as we seek to navigate these really opaque spaces, that is the state MDE. Sometimes there are lots of things that we don't know. Stephen Curry helped us navigate those things in a way that we had not been able to do before. That was helpful to us. The Michigan Department of Treasury has to be an indispensable partner, not just simply saying you did this wrong, but literally helping us navigate what needs to happen. We still have a legacy debt in Flint that it's just, that most of our urban districts have, that was incurred before the kids who entered kindergarten were actually born. So think about that, and it's amortized until 2038. We've got to figure that out so that our kids and families are actually made whole over that time, so that our kids are not going to be paying for a debt that is somebody else's debt. Finally, the MDE has to help us with respect to infrastructure, because we don't have resources, and we talked about it earlier, in our state aid to actually do that infrastructure. So the purpose of growing our buildings so our kids to be whole, and actually, the buildings be worthy of the kids that enter them, is a work, piece of work that we will continue to be engaged in, in the state of, in the city of Flint with the state of Michigan. I just really want to thank you for the opportunity to talk with you today. I think it's really been a valuable discussion at lunch. Really, Team Flint is doing hard work, and I appreciate your time, and I welcome the opportunity to come back and talk with you more about this matter.
We'll now go to the committee of the whole meeting. The next item on the committee of the whole meeting agenda is the update from the Office of Partnership Districts. Each month, the Office of Partnership Districts provides an overview of its work. This month's presentation will include the recent review of goal attainment, otherwise known as RGA, those structured conferences, modifications that have been made to the process, and updates on Benton Harbor area schools cooperative agreements. This is a monthly presentation. Does not require board action, and our presenters today are Bill Pearson, the School Reform Officer and Director of the Office of Partnership Districts, and Dan Ledoux, Supervisor of the Office of Partnership Districts.
Can you remind everyone that we cannot comment during public participation?
Yes, we have no use of it. So, we had just wrapped up public participation, so thank you, Pam. I will reiterate that public participation is an opportunity for members of the community to address the board. It is not an opportunity for the board to engage in conversation, but rather to hear from community members. But now we will go on to the presentation of partnership districts, please.
Thank you, Sheila. So there's two things that we want to review. Our goal attainment process, where we are, what we've accomplished, and then an update on Benton Harbor. So as we have talked the last couple of meetings, we were, in our 18-month reviews, there were nine partnership agreements that we were reviewing in eight districts. Saginaw had two separate partnership agreements for their district. And so the structured conference was followed, the process, and we agreed upon a performance status in each of the districts. All eight districts were either on track, off track with progress, or off track with limited progress. And then our next steps include updating our 36-month goals as needed, because now that we've been through the process once, we believe that there are districts that want to amend their outcome goals or process goals so that hopefully we can be successful at the end of three years. So the results are listed here on this chart. Like I said, there are eight districts, but there are nine partnership agreements. Saginaw had two. So in the end, we had six districts that were on track. We had two districts or two agreements that are off track with progress and one that is off track with limited progress. And I listed the number of goals they had and then how many were attained. So what that means is that the districts that are off track are having a 24-month review. So we're leaving it up to the districts to either meet with us in August or September to, after the goals are amended, to review where they are, and then, again, we'll look at, see if the district is off track or on track. And if they're off track, then we have to enter into some steps that will lead us to the 36-month decisions. Detroit is listed on there as, can you go back? Detroit is listed as a district that's having a 24-month review, but they were on track. But because there's so many schools, 21 in the first round and 35 in the second round that hasn't begun yet, I thought it was a good idea to still have a review because of the amount of schools. So they're on track, but we're still having a 24-month review.
Want us to wait for questions?
Yeah.
Are we, so with Saginaw, and there was a lot going back and forth with Saginaw Public School District, or with the Saginaw High School just last week, but I thought I heard and saw written, read that they were on track or off track with progress.
The elementary was off track with progress. The high school was off track with limited progress.
So they're thinking that they're off track with progress?
Yeah.
And I thought that that--
Yeah, good point.
But I'm going to read through some notes too, because they're confused. They don't, they don't know that.
Well, what we ended up with at the end of the meeting, we agreed that Dr. Roberts and I are going to discuss amending their partnership two agreements into one agreement. And I said, because when I was in school, if I had a C+ or a B-, that was a B-, so I said, I think that Saginaw should be off track with progress, because they had one school that was on, off track with progress, or one school that was limited progress. And we agreed before the meeting, and then we asked everybody at the meeting in a collaborative conversation, would it be okay if we put, instead of having two agreements, put them into one agreement? I wasn't here, I don't know why there are two separate agreements, but it makes sense to me that there's one partnership agreement moving forward. So, good question.
So my concern is, and we were starting, we were having these conversations before you came, is just being very clear with these districts, because I think what can happen is the quantitative, which I consider this quantitative data versus the qualitative or narrative that comes along with this gets really confusing. So I think that that's a concern. And even if I was looking at a three out of nine versus a four out of six, that can be confusing. I know it's not that straightforward, but if I got, if I had, I had a three out of nine and I'm off track with progress, and a four out of six and I'm off track with limited progress, that can get confusing. And I just don't want any of these districts to end up in a slippery slope in this one. I talk to often, so I know that they're confused.
Well, then I'm going to have to undo that confusion, because I didn't walk away that the leadership was confused. What happens is you have the process goals and you have the outcome goals. So if you aren't successful in the outcome goals, then you're not going to, even though you're very successful in the process goals, you can't be on track. And so that's, I'm just going to touch base with that in a minute in terms of what we're doing. So let me get back to that.
Okay.
Because we're going to make things clear, I hope.
Okay.
All right. So, the 24-month reviews are for Bridgeport, Spalding, Saginaw Elementary, Saginaw High School, which we're going to make into one partnership agreement. And then, as I said, Detroit is on track, but we're still going to have a 24-month review because of the number of schools. So, getting back to Pam's question, there's, there was a lot of activity in the beginning of the Office of Partnership Districts, and people did a great job putting information together, figuring out how the 18-month RGA was going to be held. You know, there were lots of new people coming in, people leaving to the office. You know, as I told you before, we're working on stability. I'm not letting anybody leave the office for a couple of years. And we have a running joke about that. But, so what we're trying to do, and what we're going to do, is we're putting together an Office of Partnership District comprehensive guide. Instead of, you know, this person said this, this person said that, you know, I asked, we need to have things written down so people, districts can read what it is to be in a partnership agreement. And so we're, like I said, we're in the process of doing that. March 22nd, we have an all-day retreat to hopefully finish it. Probably won't be done by then, but we have all kinds of ideas. We have charts up in our office, and we're figuring things out. So I'd like to give you a copy of that, but not until May, because I'm not going to be here in April. I don't feel comfortable having it presented without me here. So hopefully, we'll put things in order, and so everybody knows what it is that's expected as you go through the three years of partnership agreement. So that would, we would make that clear, I think, for districts like Saginaw in terms of what's that mean if you were very successful in process goals, but you aren't successful in the outcome goals? So that's something that, like I said, we're working on. So, any, well, before we get to Benton Harbor, any questions on that?
I'll just say too, and I know for Saginaw, and I don't want to get, I know you don't want to get into a specific district, but, well, let me just say this. I know that the partnership, the whole, the whole point, we don't want to just branch it down to the point where we're right back where we started from, because we want schools to be able to come up with a plan and then us to be able to monitor how they're progressing with that plan. So I'm not at all advocating for us to get right back to some sort of really harsh account rigid system. But something that they can, you know, monitor. And I guess for them, I know that I was a part of their planning when they were looking at doing the NWEA test scores versus the SAT test scores as their performance measure. And so are they going to be able, I thought districts are able to do that, correct?
Your question, at the end of the 36-month, these outcome goals, can you use NWA versus state?
Okay, so it's the 36, okay. I think you answered my question. It has to be at the 36 months versus this 18-month.
Well, the benchmarks can be different than the 36-month goals. What we're wrestling with in our office is a couple of things. What was stated a year and a half ago with regard to, does there have to be a state goal at the end of 36 months, or can they be a local outcome, for example, NWA, which a lot of districts use? So, you know, I've talked to a lot of people, and, you know, there's nothing written, so we want to put that into the agreement. And, you know, I personally am leaning towards there has to be one state outcome goal, whether that's SAT or whether that's NSTEP. But you can also have several other outcome, local outcome goals, which could use NWA, and you could use proficiency or growth.
So let me just ask, because now you've kind of confused it. I thought, is the fact that they couldn't use NWEA because we're using, everyone, because they have to use SAT, or because there wasn't a post in--
The high school?
A pre and post.
That was a, that was a unique situation for Saginaw, where they had been using Ames Web and were implementing NWA. So between the two years, their baseline year, they didn't have a baseline. So how do we set goals from one year to the next when the first year of implementation for NWA was this current school year? And so that was the unique situation for Saginaw.
All right, I'll probably have an additional question. Follow-up, I don't want to hold it up.
For Saginaw, I'm looking at their agreement, Saginaw High School, and it says, you know, that if 1280C is repealed or replaced, they can call the agreement void and elect to operate its partnership schools under the new legislative enactment. So I mean, is there that possibility that they could do that?
There are two districts that have that language in their partnership agreement. I talked with both superintendents. At this point, I do not think they're going to try to dissolve the partnership agreement. They're going to work with us, but I guess that would be a possibility. I'm sure that was written in through an attorney, but Dr. Roberts and I need to sit down and also talk about that. But I have not heard from either district that, hey, we want to break the partnership agreement.
What is the other district?
What is the other district?
Excuse me?
Kalamazoo.
The other district?
Kalamazoo.
Kalamazoo.
Kalamazoo. So somehow, they were thinking ahead of what might happen. So if you have some of those questions, I'd be happy to answer those, Mrs. Pugh.
Yeah, I'll look for them and I'll look through email and see.
So Benton Harbor. You know, there's been a lot going on. There's been some, some good things said from people that presented or here today to the board. There's some confusion. You know, I was not here for the cooperative agreement, so I get a lot of information from a lot of different people. But I can tell you what's been happening in the last month, and let me outline that. So about three weeks ago, I attended a Saturday board meeting with the board. And the CEO superintendent brought in a person from Baird Financial Advising, and he addressed the board on where the district is in terms of total debt. So that conversation took place. Then I was asked by the board president to dissolve the cooperative agreement this month, in the middle of the month. I said no, because we were waiting on a direction from the Attorney General's office. What does that mean for the cooperative agreement? Because 1280C goes away June 30th, and the SRO. So really, my only function as an SRO is with Benton Harbor. And so yesterday, we received direction from the AG's office. And we met with Treasury, Sheila, myself, and the CEO superintendent of Benton Harbor, you know, to talk about where we might go in the future with regard to what's best for the students. So I believe that we also need a meeting with the governor's office. And luckily, yesterday, I was asked to attend a meeting on Tuesday with a representative from the governor's office, so I can answer questions about where we are. Where that's gonna go, I don't know. I'm not sure where that is. So, you know, I'm not sure about the, you know, direction from the AG. It did not say that, you know, there's going to be any thought process of going back to 1280C or the SRO. So that means that Benton Harbor will be reverted back from the CEO superintendent to the local board come July 1st. So, which, you know, has a lot of advantages. But Treasury still has to decide what it is that needs, what direction they wanna go in terms of the financial portions. So in the meantime, somebody from Treasury, representative, met with the board, outlining according to the law what could transpire with regard to the debt that Benton Harbor has. Then Treasury met with the superintendents of the ISD so that they could be aware of what the law says with regard to what could happen. So those conversations have happened in the last few weeks also. I believe that there needs to be at some point in time, some turnover of finances to the local board before the end of the school year. Because as an ex-superintendent, you have to work, you're working right now on next year's budget. So if you're working on next year's budget, but there isn't, you know, any, there isn't an ability to work on that budget when you know you're gonna be in charge of the budget starting July 1st, there needs to be some communication in that respect, and I think we're working towards that. But, you know, as the SRO, I don't wanna work too fast with, you know, with regard to what's best for kids until we get a better picture of where everybody's going. Because, you know, we have one component, being MDE, SRO. You know, with the CEO superintendent, there's one cooperative agreement, and that cooperative agreement gave, you know, tremendous authority to the CEO and the superintendent. And there's been some good information that he has provided to me of what's been happening this year. For example, he's been working on bringing the district in compliance with fire extinguishers, security radios, AEDs recharged, safety drills required, on-track again. The achievement that he has provided to me in a document that he's going to provide to the board, first through eighth-grade students meeting projected growth in ELA and math has increased about 40 percent. Forty percent of the students have reached their growth according to the MDE, excuse me, the NWEA projections. Behavior, out-of-school suspensions are down 30 percent.
Sorry to interrupt you.
Yeah.
I wanted to ask a question going back.
Yes.
When you're talking about meeting with different constituencies and different groups, why, did you invite the board, the school board, to come? And if not, why not, to be part of these discussions now?
Because I think that, now, this is just me.
Okay.
You're only getting my opinion.
Okay.
I think that until we get some direction, we got direction from the AG. Now we need direction from Treasury. And it seems to me, if we've got other factors out there from the governor's office, we need to hear what those are, then we need a meeting with everybody to see if we're going to not break the cooperative agreement, but if we're going to have portions of the cooperative agreement turned over to the board prior to June 30th with regard to next year's budget.
I was just saying, it seems like it might help to build trust to have, at least the president and vice president of the board, be part of the discussions with these different groups, so that it's transparent, transparent what's going on.
And I was digging through emails, so I wanna make sure I heard you correct. So did you say, as of July 21st, that, did you say that there has been an opinion that, that the cooperative agreement and the CEO would, well, the CEO?
There hasn't been an opinion. There was direction that was provided to Sheila.
So I can respond to that, Pam. With the passage of 601, it eliminates 1280C. And 1280C eliminates the SRO and will eliminate the cooperative agreement we have with Benton Harbor. We, I asked the Attorney General divisional level for guidance, so what does that mean? And yesterday afternoon, I received a written document from the AG's office explaining that there are, there's three options. As of the end of June, because in the law it says effective June 30th, 2019, first, the cooperative agreement goes away. Another option is the cooperative agreement could turn into a partnership agreement. And the third is that the cooperative agreement could remove all references to SRO and replace it with MDE. And so those are the three options that are available to the department for us to have conversation around.
I was just gonna, who makes that decision?
We would be making that decision. Because-
In conjunction with?
With the CEO, because that's who signed. And it would be with the SRO, because the SRO signed. And I believe it was also with the board president at that time. So it would be, it would have to be the board president, the Benton Harbor president. It would have to be the SRO and myself.
Well, do you have more presentation?
Just that in April, Gloria Chapman from the Detroit unit, Focus Assistance and Support Team, our FAST team, will be presenting to you what we propose, that how we're gonna work in Detroit. I won't be here, so she's going to present to you about what's happening down there with the FAST unit.
Okay, so I have, I guess, first of all, this is an urgent issue. And, you know, it really would've been good to have board members and to be able to speak where we were able to ask some questions. I will say that. I am happy that we were able to hear from some, from the board vice president today. I guess some of the questions that were raised is, first of all, let me just say this. In talking to the, some of the community members, the board members and others, it seems like there's just a lot of back and forth. And, you know, I don't know who's responsible for this, but the whole bobbing back and forth between is this MDE issue or is this a governor and Treasury issue? And there does seem to be a need for a call, or not even a call, because we've done that, because we did hear that there was going to be a meeting. So there needs to be a meeting with everybody in the room. Otherwise, to me, it just seems like we're purposefully having this confusion just continue to be kicked down the road. So, and it is angering, especially when you're in these districts and you know the struggles that they have. You know, we heard from Flint, we heard about, you know, what can be done when you can take on, take the reins and start moving things yourself. You can start moving, you know, towards, more towards the black. And we need to be able to put this into the community's hands. We have a CEO, I guess some of the things that I want to hear, because in an earlier meeting, the finance meeting, we talked, we heard directly how when you lose children, you lose funding. So that can be a direct, that's a direct correlation. And then if there's not adequate planning, that's how you lose students, children. Did the CEO, because I did hear, I mean, I've heard several things, I've received emails, is there a strategic plan? How is this person communicating with the community? I understand, I'll ask the question, I know the answer to this question. Is this person from the community? Why are we continuing to plan with this person only when this person could be gone, June 30th? And then why are, how did all of a sudden we be the ones that decide which one of those three categories they go in? That needs to be in the hands of the elected board. So those are just some of the questions that I've had, because I've received emails where people, principals, are saying that they're being forced and being told to act as if they're going to leave if this person goes away, the CEO goes away. So it's angering, this is an urgent issue. I guess, hopefully, I ask some questions that can get a response versus just expressing my anger.
In response, it's a slow movement the last, it seems slow the last couple of weeks, but a lot of meetings have taken place. I completely agree. I, we need to have a meeting with everybody involved so that we can determine-
And we've been saying this, I'm sorry to stop you, because I was on the phone with a legislator on my way here. And that legislator was trying to get someone in the room. And then Sheila, you were told that we were gonna get someone in the room, someone in the room. And we were excited, and we were going back to the board and saying that everyone was gonna come together. Somehow, people are slipping out of these rooms and we're not, we're not coming to a table together.
But the AG had to provide that guidance. We didn't get that till yesterday. I know, as I said, it seems like it's slow, but things are happening. This has only been three weeks that I've been talking about. We had to get that direction first. We got that yesterday.
Tiffany. Thank you, Pam.
First, I wanna say, as a new board member, I'm really disappointed that I was not updated about the serious situation going on in Benton Harbor. You guys have been good at giving us presentations on things that are very positive, which is wonderful. But Benton Harbor is a unique situation, because it is not localized control right now. MDE put the CEO in place. So we should be getting in-depth reports about what's going on with Benton Harbor. I do appreciate, when I reached out, that you guys were very receptive and very transparent. But before that point, I'm getting contacted by people in the community, and I have no idea about what's going on. We can't operate like that. I would like to know, I would, I would like some things. I would like a copy. I think all of the board members, especially since it's up under state control or MDE control, get a copy of the cooperative agreement, a copy of the budget. I would like to get a better understanding of what's going on with the financials and how Benton Harbor even got to this point. Before the CEO got in place and what happened since the CEO got in place. What's happening with the money? Especially with the vice, with the comments made by the vice president of the board. Then also, June 30th, that's not that far from now. So what's going to happen? What's going to be the process for either selecting the new superintendent or keeping the person in place? Does the board vote on that? What's going to be the process? And how long will that take? I mean, obviously, it needs to happen quickly before it rolls around into the new school year. And also, what options did the Treasury Department end up giving? I know before, when I was getting contacted, it was because Treasury was saying that they were going to charter the schools or the schools were going to dissolve. And then in talking with you guys, I find out that Treasury, that, of course, after I start making calls, the governor was contacted. And I wish Josh would've stayed, so they can answer questions as well as far as the governor's stance. But from my understanding, she does not want the schools to become chartered or dissolved. So after the meeting, where Treasury was supposed to give different options, I was then told and also read in a news article that the person from Treasury said, well, I still wanna talk to you about chartering schools, but not as Treasury. So have we talked to Treasury? Do we know what the options are today that they are giving Benton Harbor schools beyond chartering? Or dissolving?
What I've heard is dissolving, chartering, kid, district, surrounding district, taking over as the-
ISD.
So those are really the law, what the law says can be done.
Those were the options that were given before. But from my understanding, the governor's office does not want the schools to be dissolved or chartered. So what are the other options? There has to be other options on the table.
And therein kind of lies the problem that several board members are talking about.
Tiffany, that is exactly why we are asked, we've asked for a meeting.
Yes, and that's where we're heading. We're getting there.
So Michelle, Pam, Cassandra.
Yeah, I think the idea of meeting is good. I just wanna ensure, I've brought this up other times, that representatives of the community, the board, the parents, be in the meeting, be in the room. So that if there's questions about the data, it can all be, it might be messy, but it'll be hashed out. And I think without that sort of open transparency, it, you know, it's just, it's just, will make things more difficult in the end. I think that's very important. I think talking to the superintendent is important to have that person there, but also other people from different perspectives to all be, hopefully, looking at the same data and agreeing on whatever the data is, is accurate, and then moving from there. Because I'm hearing different things about the data from different people. We are solvent, we're not solvent. Where is, and it's confusing to me. So if people could come together and just look at the, hash that out, I just think that's critical. And I really, and I would like to have somebody, if possible, from our board there. I'm willing to volunteer my time to do it. But I think that that, I just think it just needs a little bit more transparency and a little bit more input to address some of the concerns that came out in public comment.
And when will we, when will we know anything? When will we know from Treasury? When will we know about what's going to happen after June 30th? I mean, what's the date?
The end of, the end of the cooperative agreement is June 30th?
Right, but then we need to know who's going to run the district, so-
Well, at that point, when the cooperative agreement- Well, at that point, when the cooperative agreement is ended, the district goes back to a traditional district. So the board becomes a traditional board, and the board, the superintendent would become, who is the CEO, becomes a superintendent.
Okay. So at that point, does the board get to vote on if they want to keep the superintendent, or if they want a different superintendent, and a search begins? How does that work?
We'd have to ask for clarification on that. I did not ask for clarification on that.
And then when will we know what other options are available for them from treasury, the treasury department? I know you're gonna meet with them.
Yeah, that I don't know.
Do you have a meeting set up already?
I do not have a meeting set up with treasury. We've asked, we've asked for a meeting with the governor's office, and treasury, and us, just so that we're all clear on the position of each of us, and what we would like to see happen for the district, which of course, is to do what's best for the students of Benton Harbor.
Can the president and vice president of the board attend that meeting?
Since I'm not calling the meeting, I can't guarantee that, but I can certainly ask. And Pam, you had a question, then, Cassandra.
So I guess one of the questions that I did not hear was if there was, in fact, a strategic plan that has been completed and shared with the board by the, by the CEO that we hired?
I asked that question yesterday. He said that he had a strategic plan, and that he's ready to share it.
Okay, and when was, is that, are we meeting the deadline?
The deadline for the cooperative agreement was a strategic plan would be put in place and presented to the board by the end of the year.
By the end of the school year?
School year, yeah.
Okay, and so that was the first and only strategic plan that they were supposed to present to the board?
As far as I know.
Okay. I guess for me, if we can, what I'm gonna ask is that we be included on some sort of correspondence for a meeting with treasury. I know we can't make anyone meet, but that we expedite the urgency, and it sounds like Cassandra's gonna speak to this. Then I also want to know is when will there be, because that, this is really disheartening, that no update on budget, and no meeting with the, not only with the board, but other people that were a part of the signed cooperative agreement? And where, when will we, when will the CEO be meeting with them? When will you, as the SRO, be having the board to meet, or the CEO to meet with the board? And communicate with them?
There are people that are meeting in the governor's office on Tuesday at different times. After that, then we've heard from everybody, and then we need a meeting. I'm all for what you've been saying, to have a meeting with everybody involved, but, you know, that has to, those, all the steps have to be put in place, in terms of getting the AG's direction, and then questions that are asked from the governor's office, so that then, because treasury has already defined what the law says about what could happen in terms of the debt. So then we need a meeting.
You're saying you're going to wait until after we've met with, with those people, before you meet with the elected board?
After Tuesday, my recommendation would be that we get everybody together and have a discussion.
It'd be good for the, for the people on the board, and I would even go a far to say whoever the teacher is, elected president of the local, to actually be in there to ask questions of the AG office as well, and of the governor's office as well, so that everybody can be on the same page, looking, hearing the same things, and it would be, I think.
And so they can interject. And then let me just say, and I'm gonna say one more thing, and I know, Cassandra, just like my board members and I would determine who will represent, and typically, that would be the president, and there are times when I may ask Cassandra to go along, or there might be some other expert that might go along. I would hope that we're, it's just, we're letting that board decide who goes into these meetings. But, and then we'll talk about, I'm with Michelle, I definitely think that they need to be a part of, at the table, especially given that this CEO hired by us could be going away June 30th.
Yes.
Cassandra.
When you say that these are the options that the law provides, are you referring to, what's it called, the fit, or whatever that legislation was, that, what specific law governs this?
What treasury told me, here are the, if you want to call them options, if you want to call them the ways that the district can work towards, according to the law, with regard to the debt, because there's a lot of debt. So what's gonna happen, treasury has to have a say in it, as I understand it.
According to what law, though? I'm curious what specific law governs this.
I don't know. That's what I was told by treasury.
Well, I would like to confirm that. And do you know, by any chance, how many districts treasury has put forth the idea of chartering the district?
I do not. I know that we have Highland Park, I think, we have Muskegon Heights, I don't know of other ones. We've had, you know, dissolving districts that they've mentioned, Inglewood, Buena Vista, so I'm not sure.
And have any of those been successful?
You want my personal opinion?
Sure.
You want to give your personal? I would love to give my personal opinion, and have a conversation with everybody, but.
You don't have to put yourself in that position.
No, I can answer it this way. I'm involved with Muskegon Heights, and it's a partnership district. The two boards, the systems boards, the local board, both have attorneys. They, I just called a meeting two weeks ago, so that we could converse about how we're gonna work together, what's best for Muskegon Heights' kids. And so there are lots of issues. What happens is, when the authority from a local board is not there anymore, and they sign off, anger happens. And therefore, adults can get in the way of what's good for kids, because both entities want to take over, and what, figure out what's best for that district. So to answer your question, I don't think it's that successful.
I don't either, which is why I wonder why treasury keeps pushing this failed model.
Well, I'm not going to give my opinion on that one.
I'm just gonna put that out there for the world. So I'm in agreement with my colleagues on the board, that this is an urgent issue. And I'm particularly concerned about treasury bringing these options to the table, without a clear understanding if these are, in fact, the only options that are available in law, or if these happen to be the options that treasury likes to bring to the table. I don't know the answer to that question. But I think that, given past experience, it's concerning that that may be the direction that we're headed.
Well, I think from a treasury standpoint, they're looking at the dollars, and they're saying, this is a way that the debt can be repaid with that charter option. And that's, that's what they're looking at. I mean, I don't think treasury is indicating one way or the other, if that's the direction that should, should happen. But that's what, that's what's out there. So it is, it's available, and that's what Muskegon Heights has done. Although, I'm understanding they can't pay off that debt for about 25 years. Benton Harbor can pay that off a little quicker, from what I've heard from treasury. But that's where they're looking at it, in terms of, okay, how, what can we do with the debt, so that the general fund then can fund the education of the students? So that's why that option's there. Might not be what's best for the district, might not be what's best for the students. I'm not saying that it is or isn't, but that's why treasury says so.
Yeah, and treasury has a certain perspective, but it may not be the perspective of what's in the best interest of kids.
That's why we all have to get into a meeting.
Exactly. Thank you.
Thank you. And Tiffany?
Question. If the ISD, for whatever reason, cannot take on Benton Harbor, if that's an option, is there the availability for another ISD to take it on?
I don't think that is an option, unless the ISD was doing it through a charter. But I don't, I don't, but I'm not the expert on it. I'm just giving you what I think.
And I would hate for us to get into a discussion about options that deep, because we have board members sitting out there that haven't had a chance to be a part of this, and.
Well, I just, I just want to know what the options are, so that they know all of everything that's available. And we know as well, what's available to them.
Right, my emphasis is on meeting with that board as soon as possible, and whatever we have to do to get that meeting, because we can't keep, treasury is blaming some things on us, we're hearing some things, obviously, that are being blamed, that the urgency is on their end. And so I would just want to, want to hear how we're moving forward with those two things.
How are we gonna get the update before the next meeting? And it would be wonderful if the CEO was on the next agenda, so we can ask.
We would love the opportunity for Dr. Herrera to come and present the initiatives that he's put in place in the district, and share the student test scores for NWEA, and the growth that they've shown, based on the training he's provided to teachers, the new curriculum that they're using in the classrooms for ELA.
And the budget. I would love to hear about that as well.
And the budget, and the budget as well.
And again, we have board, board vice president, who said that they haven't gotten an update from the CEO on a budget, so I would hope that he would be meeting with the board first. And then if Dr. Herrera comes here, then we, I would also want to have some of the board members, whomever they choose, to be a part of the meeting as well, because we only have a few more months, and Dr. Herrera, June 30th.
So our recommendation would be that Dr. Herrera work with his board to present the information to them before he presents to us.
And that they be able to come to the table along with him.
Yes. We would very much like that.
Need to do anything on April 5th, before we meet about the applications? Have an update?
We'd have to look and see if that is their spring break, I'm not sure.
Oh, actually, it is.
First week of the fall.
Oh, actually, it's my.
Uh-oh. Don't.
That's right, I'll be here.
And the board meeting, the meeting's on the 5th, and then the board meeting is, yeah.
Or whatever.
Two days, two, two workdays later.
Oh, okay.
And now, is it, is it in writing, I'm sorry, I know you want to get on, is it in writing that the June, that that June 30th date, what would that mark, what that means?
In legislation, that 1280C is repealed, so therefore, there is no SRO, so therefore, there won't be a cooperative agreement, is my understanding. So it's the only cooperative agreement in the state, and that's done June 30th.
It was, it was part of House Bill 5526, that's now 601.
And then the cooperative agreement, did you say that we could get a copy of that? Or is that someplace, okay.
And the budget?
I don't have the budget.
I mean, can you get that, you can retrieve it from the CEO, correct?
I'll ask.
Which, are you talking, the budget of?
You're talking about the district's budget?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Get that right off.
Benton Harbor.
Right on the website. You can go, you can go to their website, and get their district budget off their website, because there's, it's a transparency link.
Do they have expenditures, like their actual, you know, expended, revenues and expenditures?
It's not there.
So then what's, what's the ask here, that we get?
The district, the district budget.
Okay, so we'll get that.
Yeah, I'd also want to see, and maybe Tom can help me figure out, what is it, the balance sheet, their revenue and their expenditures of the last year? Not just the budget, but what they've actually gotten and sent.
Is there audit on there?
Yeah, that, and here I go again, because one of the questions, one of the things that came up, that I kept hearing, is that there was a loss in students. And now I'm hearing that there was already a projection for the loss in students. So where do I see, where do I see that? Do you get what I'm saying? So if the cause of the problem was a loss in students, but that was already projected, then.
My understanding is that the loss of students, projected loss of students was, the actual loss of students was greater than the projected. I believe that the projected loss was about 90 students, and indeed, they lost more than 100 students, I believe, if my memory serves me correct.
Okay, because they said 5%, and somewhere, I thought I heard that they were already projecting 140, 120, I could be wrong. I thought I heard that they, I heard someone say.
Did they, heard something?
That they were projecting more. I'll ask, when I get an opportunity.
I was told they've been averaging 90 student loss for the last five years, but I believe that that is correct. They had 90 in, in their, but they had over 100 that was the actual count.
So it was over the 140 that I thought I heard, that the board vice president said?
I have not heard over 140.
Because I thought he just said 120 at the end of the table, 120 or 140 or something.
Do you have an answer to that?
My understanding is that, yes, the district did budget for a loss of students due to a recent audit in the ISD.
I hope in the CEO's plan, that he has something for retaining the students, as well as attracting students that have left the district, but still live there. I would love to see that as well.
Okay, seeing no other questions, thank you both, Bill and Dan.
There's a document from our Office of Partnership District that was initialized by Dr. Shelton, and completed by our office, and has information for you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, next item on the agenda is a discussion regarding criteria for grant programs. Does anyone on the board have any questions for staff regarding grant criteria? Seeing none, moving on to approval of the State Board of Education minutes.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have support. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you. And we have approval of the minutes of the closed session of February 12, 2019. May I please have a motion to approve the minutes of the closed session?
So moved.
And second, it's been, we have a motion, and we have support for it. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And motion carries. And now we have the report from the president of our Board of Education.
All of my items will be addressed later in the agenda, so I will skip my report.
Thank you, and I will move into the report of the interim state superintendent. I just have a couple of things to share. I had an opportunity to attend the American Association of School Superintendents and Administrators Conference, where it was a wonderful opportunity to share that conference experience with about 30 superintendents from Michigan, two of which were recognized. One was Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson from Oakland Schools. She received the AASA Women in School Leadership Superintendent Award, and was also the recipient of this year's AASA Dr. Ephy H. Jones Humanitarian Award. And of course, Dr. Glenn Maleko was recognized as Michigan Superintendent of the Year. He was brought onstage with, along with all of the other superintendents of the year from the, across the country. In addition to some really wonderfully provoking, thought-provoking keynotes, speeches, I also had a chance to attend six breakout sessions that were presented by Michigan superintendents. One on early childhood and how that matters most, one on using stakeholder feedback for school and district improvement, and school improvement processes, the benefits of a balanced calendar, greening the schoolyards for the benefits of students, staff, and the community, how to use social media to promote. how to use social media to promote, uh, your district strategically, and then, um, growing, how to build on influencing learning within your school, your district and your ISD. So the conference was both enlightening and informative. And, uh, most recently, I've been continuing my meet and greet with legislators. As I mentioned, um, as I meet with them, I take a folder of information about the department. Um, I provide for them a list of the different offices in the department and the roles and responsibilities of all the offices, as well as some MDE swag on our top 10 and 10. As often as we can to promote top 10 and 10, we do that. And then we also share, I also share with them our annual, our priorities that are out, that are from our top 10 and 10, our three priorities, which are literacy, whole child and P8, and talk about the work that we are doing in the department focusing on these three priorities and how we came to establish the three of them. I talk about the work that we've done in the last year on top 10 and 10, using the four focus areas that are part of our strategic plan. I highlight parts of the annual review. I share with them our metrics and also review with them, um, some of the, um, student data that we use for measuring our progress. And then after that, I open up to conversations that they would like to speak, um, about. And some of the common themes that they are interested in, um, is to reduce the time that students spend testing. Snow days and how to, the best way to make up those snow days. Um, the read-by-grade-three law and the, uh, state's position on retention. Um, and I, uh, share with them that while there are some benefits to the law and that is that it, uh, helped the state focus on early literacy. It's a focus we didn't have until that law. And that from that law, we have our essential practices in literacy, our modules for teaching literacy. Um, we also have early notification of parents and we have putting plans in place to support struggling, struggling learners. All of that said, that we are opposed to retaining students in third grade because they're not reading on grade level. Um, and so we've had some really good conversations about that. Um, and then we talk about teacher evaluation and the role of teacher evaluation in, um, teacher shortages and, um, re, how we can not only retain but attract young people into education. And so those conversations are going to continue this next month and hopefully I will have them wrapped up by the time we have our April meeting. And so that concludes my report and I'll now turn to Laura Chang, who is our 2018-19 Michigan Teacher of the Year. Laura is a K5 Reading and Math Interventionist in the Vicksburg Community Schools. And joining her is Kimberly Regglesworth. She is Region 2's Regional Teacher of the Year. Kimberly will be joining Laura at the table today. Um, Kimberly teaches history at Onaway High School in Onaway, Michigan, and welcome both Laura and Kimberly.
Thank you, Sheila. Teachers and principals, like all professionals, need on-the-job support to hone their knowledge and skills. On-the-job training opportunities throughout an educator's career improve instructional practices and have a direct effect on student achievement. They're also an important strategy to recruit and retain teachers in their profession. So this continuum of on-the-job support starts with mentoring with our early career teachers in their first few years of the practice and continues with coaching, both, um, of which must be part of a statewide, comprehensive, aligned and coherent system of support, evaluation and capacity building for educators. Across Michigan, mentoring and coaching programs are currently implemented with a wide range of effectiveness, support and funding. I had the pleasure of shadowing Laura Wilson, Instructional Coach with Vicksburg Community Schools. That's the back of Laura right there. Um, and, and this opportunity confirmed my growing belief that effective instructional coaches for all teachers in Michigan are a crucial, uh, crucial step to help us achieve the top 10 and 10. So first, the difference, we hear mentor and coaching thrown around, um, quite often in our field. Mentors are trusted, experienced professionals who take an active role in the development of early career educators. Mentors and, and their mentees co-develop goals, ultimately working to improve their mentee's skills and knowledge. Coaching involves connecting educators with experts in their field who can model effective strategies and help them use those practices in their classroom and schools. In some cases, coaching is used to help educators incorporate a new program, a new curriculum or a new skill. In others, coaching is responsive to an educator's need. The most effective coaching program establishes clear links between the needs identified in an educator's evaluation, um, observations, interim data and other feedback loops. Vicksburg Schools employs four full-time instructional coaches. They meet with all probationary teachers in their first three years in the district once a month. And first-year teachers, um, are met with on a bi-weekly basis or more. They facilitate instructional skills classes to meet the extra professional development requirements from the state. And they focus on topics, um, relevant to those first and second-year teachers, including accessing teacher resources, the teacher support, the teacher support plan, MOEXs, new district initiatives, evaluations, SLOs, scenarios in the classroom and more. They offer breakout learning to meet the diverse needs of these early career teachers because they work with teachers who are, um, high school CTE, school psychologists, elementary teachers, who all need a different kind of professional development to meet their classroom needs. These teachers facilitate Basic Five visits, which I'll talk, I'll talk about in a minute. They work with teachers on technology integration, do some co-teaching. But probationary teachers, early career teachers, they aren't the only teachers who benefit from coaches in Vicksburg. Every core content area is assigned a coach and teachers can reach out to coaches as needed. The bottom line is that these coaches facilitate development and refinement of a professional practice with a focus always on improving student achievement. Basic Five visits, these direct the self-reflection and growth process for new teachers at Vicksburg Schools by focusing on five mo, five main areas. The bottom line for these visits are that they focus on growth and, and instruction. They are non-evaluative, they're warm, they're welcoming. The data collected is truly for the teachers to reflect on with their coach and to set goals. The principal doesn't see this data, I couldn't even see this data on the visits. Very, it's very protected and guarded to maintain that, that relationship of trust and growth. Laura Wilson describes a coach as trustworthy, a good communicator, positive, supportive, knowledgeable, and that it's very important to always keep her teacher hat on, to remember what it's like to be a teacher in a classroom. Laura Wilson really works hard on that. With the growing expectations, when you're not in the classroom, it's important to remember what it's like, to relate. In addition, she points out that coaches and mentors must readily, be readily, readily available because sometimes the needs of these newer teachers seem very urgent to them. Laura, our coach, points out that Vicksburg instructional coach services are intended to be job-embedded professional learning. Teachers' needs are met right in our own classrooms, tailored to individual teachers and tailored to their sets of students at that point in time. She said you don't need to leave your classroom or leave your district to receive the support you need. Laura also says that she wants to be an advocate for teachers. She works with countless teachers all around the district and strives to celebrate the good things, advocate for teachers and support what they need so that students can be successful. Report after report in Michigan agrees, effective teachers and principals are key to improving student learning and outcomes. This is supported by research that shows effective teaching is the number-one in-school factor for student learning and educators agree too. So to advance this recommendation, um, first, Michigan must establish statewide guidance, including common standards for identifying mentors and coaches, like a track record of strong student outcomes in the classroom, a common definition of their roles and responsibilities, a common training and feedback system for them and a curriculum to prepare and support mentors and coaches. Also, creating local policies and encouraging innovation and flexibility to allow Michigan's strongest teachers to mentor or coach without permanently leaving the classroom or school. And to create financial incentives for mentors and coaches. Investment needs to, is needed to fund this recommendation, not just in developing statewide systems to support the effective implementation, but also in compensating teachers who take on an additional leadership role and responsibility to become a mentor or coach. Um, investment is needed around state-level systems and training to ensure high-quality coaching that leads to improved instructional practices and student outcomes. I should point out that, that recruiting and mentoring, uh, I should point out that recruiting mentors and coaches can also be a challenge. As Michigan develops standards for mentors and coaches, there must be an acknowledgement that in districts and schools with high teacher turnover, another challenge could be a lack of highly effective, experienced teachers that could serve as mentors. Research, research suggests that coaching is an effective strategy to improve instruction and student outcomes. It also suggests that taking programs to scale is challenging. Of course, effective implementation is essential to the success of coaching programs. This requires several elements, including qualified coaches and buy-in from the educators participating. Rather than asking every local school to identify best practices, the state should work with locals to develop guidance on effective strategies and include all stakeholders, teacher prep institutions, administrators and of course, teachers to the table there. Now Kimberly Regglesworth, our Regional Teacher of the Year from Region 2, is going to share a few, um, points specific to her region.
Hi, um, thanks so much for giving me the opportunity. My presentation is gonna be on a sort of somber subject, but it is something that in northern Michigan, we really struggle with. And I, I think maybe sometimes it gets forgotten just because of the, the rural area where we live. It's a vacation area, there's so many people, they think, oh, it must be so wonderful to live there, which it is, but we have our own very unique problems, um, up in the area. And so one of our major problems is that, uh, we have very few resources for students that are facing mental health issues that are coming from at-risk home environments. And that really is a majority of our students. They've done so much research into, um, adverse childhood experiences, student trauma. And so we have kids coming into our school that are carrying these huge bags of all of these home issues and life issues. And if they are bringing that with them, we have to be able to take that off of their backs in order for them to be prepared to learn it all. And our northern Michigan counties, if you look at the, um, lack of mental health resources, you can see that a lot of those counties have some very high scores, um, which are, uh, more even per capita than Wayne County, Tri-County area. So we have even fewer resources, um, but we have the same per capita numbers of students with mental health challenges. And so without having large hospitals nearby and, uh, things of that sort, we have no mental health facilities, we have very few psychiatrists and psychologists for students, very few counselors, our school does not have a counselor that's employed by our school. Um, and so, and there's not a lot of additional funding. In addition to that, it's very difficult to convince recent college graduates with these degrees to come into the rural area of northern Michigan because, um, them wanting to have other people their own age to interact with, uh, cultural resources that you have of being in a bigger city. So it's very difficult to convince those people to come into our northern Michigan areas to provide their services to our kiddos. One of the other problems that's associated with this is actually the higher suicide rates of people in rural areas. And this isn't just teenagers, this is also adults. So it's a much broader problem than just kids in schools. Um, but because there is much fewer access to mental health facilities and mental health professionals, you do see unfortunately many, many people turning to suicide as a solution to their mental health challenges. And you can see that that is a much greater number than, um, definitely cities, suburban areas, uh, even urban areas and central areas of cities, which I think sometimes people don't realize that the rate is that much higher in those areas. But I do have some ideas for some solutions. Um, and one of them that is being utilized for regular medical care in my area, I myself have used telehealth because my, uh, regular medical provider is actually half an hour away from my home. So if I'm very, very ill and really, you know, I'm thinking I probably shouldn't get in my car and try to drive a half an hour because I could cause an accident, um, I can use telehealth right from my home. Uh, lack of internet access is also an issue that we have in the rural areas. However, within our schools, we have pretty good service. Um, I know in our school, we have very good internet access and we have a lot of private rooms. We also have a school-based health center that I'll talk about in just a minute. So we have facilities where our students would be able to utilize telehealth to speak with mental health professionals, um, if that was a little bit more available. Another thing would be to encourage our rural students to go into the mental and behavioral health fields. Those are the people most likely to be willing to return to the rural areas because it's their home, it's where their families are. Um, you know, they have a connection to those areas. I look at just the teaching staff at our school, we have 34 professional staff and our two principals. Both of our principals are graduates of our school and about 18 of our 34 professional, uh, teaching staff are also graduates of our school, so that's, um, an example of the people coming back. Something that perhaps the MDE or the state or a combination of could do would be some training for educators. We've had some professional development trainings at my school and I know we've had some through our ISD as well, to understand how to identify students that are having mental health challenges and at least try to be able to get them help. However, I'm not a psychologist, I'm not a psychiatrist. I can support these students, but I can't fix their issues. And so, um, having the training is excellent in order to be able to identify those kids and get them the help that they need as long as the help is available and that's kind of the bigger issue. Um, and then this last point that I have on here, I really have to give a shout-out to three of my high school students, my civic students from this past semester. One of their, uh, their final exam project was to create a civic action project where they, um, researched a particular, um, community issue or community problem and then presented some solutions to that. And I had three students that focused not directly on mental health, but actually on teenage suicide and how additional funding and additional locations of school-based health centers would be, um, helpful toward that. So I kind of got this idea for this presentation from their presentation, so I have to give credit where it's due. Um, we have a school-based health center in our school, we've had it for quite some time. I think we were one of the first schools in northern Michigan to have that. We have so many benefits there, it's great for our students, it's great for our parents, it's great for our community. Um, it increases student attendance because if they need to have a doctor's appointment, they're maybe only gone from the classroom for 20 minutes, the time it takes them to walk up there, have their appointment and then return back to class. It improves graduation rates because again, kids are missing less school, they do better in school. We do have a full-time counselor in our school-based health center. Um, and she is booked usually months in advance though, we could use, we could use two more. We could easily use two more. Lot less hospitalization, excuse me, hospitalization and emergency care usage, so, um, we're not bogging down those systems. Um, and really, they have shown, um, marked improvement in student mental health for them to be able to have access to, uh, the professionals that are there. And so just to give you an idea of where the school-based health centers are located in Michigan, um, I tried to circle in those that are in Region 2. And really, if you divide the state up into the regions that they use for the Regional Teacher of the Year program, we actually have more in Region 2 than, um, any other area of the state, uh, which is necessary because we really are far away from hospitals and other types of facilities like that. But if we can encourage these to be utilized in more schools, I think the benefits will far outweigh the cost. I think it would be an excellent, um, assistance to educators, to students, to families for, to be able to get the mental health services that they really need.
Thank you. Thank you Laura and thank you Kimberly. Send you the minute to dial, okay? So we will take a short pause while Marilyn dials the phone. I'll speak more slowly. First item on today's discussion-action agenda is a discussion on the State Superintendent's search. And Cassandra will be leading this discussion and we're waiting for Mike.
Mike Collins.
Right on key. Okay, Cassandra, turn this presentation over to you.
Okay, so, uh, yesterday was the deadline for applications, uh, to be submitted for. So, yesterday was the deadline for applications to be submitted for the State Superintendent. We originally had tried to set up a special, as part of our meeting this afternoon, to go into executive session to review the applications. However, we learned late last week that Ray and Associates would be unable to pull together all of the materials that quickly. So, we have identified April 5th as a day for a special meeting so that we can review all of the applications. And with that, I will turn it over to Ray and Associates.
Thanks very much. It's Mike Collins, and nice to be with you again. I just have a short update, if I may, and Cassandra and Sheila and Marilyn. So, let me back up just a little bit because the last time we were together on the phone, I had given you a summary of where we'd been, first of all, in the list that you gave us, constituent or stakeholder group. And since that time, we have now exhausted them. And the data that you're really looking for is there were 37 groups or organizations that you asked us to reach out to. We have had verbal or direct contact conversations, at least 25 minutes each, with 32 of those 37 organizations or associations. They've been incredibly informative and people have been very good, and they've been very pleased to be invited. There were five that did not respond despite two emails and no less than four phone calls. So, we've concluded that work with 32 of the 37. And we had consulted with Sheila, actually, to make sure that other ones that hadn't, which ones are most important. And we were able, and thanks to her reaching out to them as well, we were able to make contact since the last time we were on the phone together with five of those and conclude and, you know, completed our conversations with them. So, I just wanted to kind of bring you up. So, that's what we go into this with. So, that's number one. Number two is, we have reviewed all the names that were offered or said, please reach out for those that were appropriate, and then most of them were. All of them have at least been either directly spoken to or at least received calls from us regarding their interest in applying. There are a few that might have been somebody's name, but they're honestly, they're, they wouldn't be, they wouldn't qualify. I don't, I don't think they would even qualify by licensure in many cases. So, those are the only ones that, once we saw that, that we moved on from. And there were a number that said, at this time, they, you know, this is one of those, are you ready to move on? And it was their, their responses were, now we're, you know, flattered that somebody thought of us, but it's not, you know, it's not in our plan right now. The other thing from an informational standpoint, if I might share with you, we've done, and thanks to Marilyn's help and contacts, we did some, you know, deep dive into, there's an interesting, an interesting thing that happens in Michigan, which at least to my limited knowledge, is not all that common. So, if you're in the public education retirement system, and then you go to work as, let's say, potentially the State Superintendent, you're put in a different retirement system. Well, what happens is you, there is no reconciliation when you're finally, finally done and you put them all together. So, you, you run this challenge of somebody who's 29 years in the business in the public education retirement system, and they spend six years as the State Superintendent. Well, they're going to get the benefit of the retirement from the six years and the benefit from 29, but they don't get to put it back together to get the ultimate benefit of 35 years of service. And it is, and the reason that's true is that in 2017, there was a piece of legislation that was passed that prohibited them from being reconciled together at the very end. So, we, we have had those conversations with, you know, on the whole statewide human resources side of life. They've even shared with us the piece of legislation and what it says. We had to share that with interested, some interested applicants, some of which it caused them to say, no, thank you, in all candor. Not many, but I wanted you to know that that was out there and the exploration was made in every form or fashion. And your, the piece of legislation that was passed in 2017 makes that prohibitive. So, that's a little bit of background information. We usually, because it's so close to midnight of yesterday or midnight, you know, or 12:01 of this morning. So, we have, we have what we see as 44 completed applications. However, we are, we literally go back into those, which takes the staff a day and make sure that all the pieces are there, all the reference points are there, reference letters and so forth. So, right now, I can report to you that we have 44 completed. They may not, it may wind up being 42 that stay completed. So, that's what's going on today. And then, you had, you wound up with 28 that were pulled or started, applications that were started and not completed. And all of those received as recently as last Thursday, a notice from the office that said, hey, remember the deadlines at midnight on the 11th. Please, you know, get busy and complete these. We look forward to receiving them, et cetera. So, the late, they've gotten four of those from us, from the time they have started the application. So, those are the numbers. In terms of what they really say, we will actually start our conversations internally tomorrow afternoon with a call at 2 o'clock Eastern Time. So, that, that's part of what we do is we review all these and then begin to kind of line them up and kind of, these are these groupings. We then begin to look into very seriously and start Google searches and media searches and so forth before we will bring you on the 5th recommendations for your consideration. So, that, that's your update at the moment. I'm happy to answer questions. There are, in terms of certain people who are in the field, who have, whose names have been mentioned numerous times, et cetera, and who we have spoken with, those applications are completed, as well as obviously some we don't know. So, I think, I think the pool is very strong. And, you know, we're delighted to move this stuff forward and look forward to being with you on the 5th.
I, I just want to confirm, as you're doing your, your review of the applications, even if you come across some applications that are not completed per your method, I think we should still bring them forward to the meeting on April 5th as we don't want to do any eliminations that could impact our open meetings requirements.
Oh, yeah, no, unequivocally, we wouldn't do that. It's just that if, if, you know, if, if they're, if somehow they listed letters of reference and they don't appear, that's the only piece you have is to treat everybody somewhat fairly. I'm happy to show, they'll be there, Cassandra. That's not the issue. But I'm just telling you, we will share that information with you.
Absolutely. Are there any questions from the board?
I have a question. So, you have compiled 44 applications that are complete. Does the board get to see the 44 and then we narrow it down?
Yeah, we, we, we bring all of those with us for your review. And then, we offer our thoughts basically on categories. So, the notion is just that we offer those that we recommend be seriously considered, those that, you know, it's up to you to consider, and those that we either know or believe won't even, won't even pass licensure. You know what I mean? Aren't legitimate applicants.
So, this is Cassandra. I was talking to Marilyn earlier this week and had a request, and I'm not sure if you guys can do it or not, I, I hope that you can, which is that we, as the board, maybe get access through a password-protected program, you know, non-downloadable, but at least to be able to review the resumes and the cover letters ahead of time so that we can come prepared to that meeting. And Marilyn looked, she checked with the Attorney General's Office to make sure that that would not be a violation of the Open Meetings Act, and the AG's office has confirmed that it would not be. So, is that a possibility?
I, to tell you the truth, I've never been asked for it. I can't see why it can't. So, Cassandra, if you, you know, give me a little leeway till tomorrow, I can get you that answer.
That would be great.
I imagine, I imagine we can. You know what I mean? I, I don't know why not. But before I just say absolutely, only because I, I'm not aware of that request being, ever being made in that form or fashion.
Well, thank you.
So, I will, we will, we will give Marilyn a, you know, an absolute answer by tomorrow.
You know, I'm kind of surprised about that. I mean, if I was an applicant, you know, I could be, I could be up, you know, looking at it when my wife is looking over my shoulder or, you know, it's out of control of the meeting that we're going to be in, the closed meeting. I could be taking a picture of it. I don't know, it just, I'd be really surprised. I don't know that the applicants would be.
Well, and, and that may be. I mean, the office may, you know what I'm saying? I just have never asked that question and have never been apprised that, that it was asked by somebody else.
I want to. I understand what you're saying, but it's kind of outside of that.
I, I, yeah, I have never, I have never brought them anywhere to the board until we went into the meeting.
Yeah, I, this is Lupe. I don't feel comfortable either because if I was an applicant, I wouldn't want my name out there, especially if they want confidentiality. There's always that, that risk. You know, we're all honest people, but there's always that possibility that my application would be out there. So, I, I feel, I don't feel comfortable with.
Well, we, yeah, and we probably would have to tell them all that this is what we're doing, which could cause some withdrawal.
Yeah. It's a good idea because we do it for the search for the superintendent and for the, and for the Teachers of the Year, but they're disclosed already. It's not a confidential application, but these are confidential.
Yeah. So, I, I would hope that as board members, we could be trusted with maintaining confidentiality. I, I.
I can't, I can't speak to it till I ask them because I don't know how to talk, only because I've never seen it before.
Any other questions? All right.
Okay, I think we are all set. Mike, thank you very much. We look forward to seeing you on the fail log.
Oh, absolutely. And if there are other questions either that you share with Sheila or Marilyn, I mean, they can convey them to us and between now and then, we're happy to respond, just so everybody's aware.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Cassandra, I do have one question.
Okay, hold on. Mike, hold on. Judy has a question.
The dates that we have held beyond the 5th, we're keeping those at this point.
I would still hold those, yes.
Still hold those, okay. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Did you send them to us?
Yeah. Can you send them?
Yeah, just, just tell us what they are, please.
You could email them to us. I don't, I don't know. 17th and April 24th.
Yep.
That was it.
Okay.
Well, the other ones were the first week in April, which we lost.
Okay. And do you know?
No, but I, I would suggest that we could give, we could only find two so far that worked, that it would probably be all day.
Like at 9:00 or what?
9:30, yeah.
Okay, that, that, those are the dates we have, so if they change, please let us know, but otherwise, we're set.
Why end up by 8?
Yeah, we could do 10.
That'd be great. That'd be helpful. Thank you.
We can try. I'm not sure. But we can try. If you don't start till 10.
Well, here's the thing, on the 5th, when we know how many candidates we have, we'll be able to better, better idea, have a better idea of how many, how much time we will actually need. So, for now, just hold those dates, but with the understanding that we'll probably have to add at least another day.
All right. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you. Take care.
All right. Our next item on today's agenda is State and Federal Legislative Update. So, I am now going to turn this agenda item over to Lupe Ramos Montini, the Chairperson of the Board's Legislative Committee. Okay, this is.
Yes. Do you want me to pass them out while you vote them? Yes. So, I can have one. Thank you. No, I'll just give it to you. Thank you. Everybody has one. I do. Your one's not moving fast enough. What are we going to do about it? Not much.
Are these your copies, Lupe?
I'm sorry?
Are these your copies?
Yes.
Fancy paper.
My intern. I have. Okay. All right. Well, this is our Legislative Committee Report, and Lupe Ramos, the Chairperson, co-chair, Dr. Judy Pritchett, and the Honorable Nikki Snyder, and Honorable Tiffany Tilly are the members, and the MDE, Liaisoners Marty Eckley and Caroline, how do you say her last name?
Lathan.
Lathan. Just like it's written.
Yeah, right.
Okay, so, you have seen our mission statement. We did add another goal. We're very ambitious. We added goal number one, and we thought that that was the most important one, creating a proactive agenda to inform and engage the State Board of Education and then research and then cultivate relationships. And I think number three, it was very successful, the luncheon that we had today. I don't know if you all talked to some of the legislators, but they all want another one. As I was walking out, they want to, you know, tell your people to contact us so we can get the next one going. So, it was good. All right. So, we go to the Legislative Updates, and Cassandra is going to take the first one, the A3F grade system. And that's Hospital 601 of 2018.
So, at the direction, at the direction of the board last month, I did meet with the Attorney General's Office. We had a very good conversation, but we weren't able to come to any specific conclusions as they needed to go back and do some additional research. So, we're kind of in a holding pattern for right now. So, as a result of that, I have, we will be passing around a very quick resolution that I am asking that we consider asking the Legislature to extend the deadlines that are found within the law, because even under the best of circumstances, the deadlines that they provided would be very difficult to meet. However, when there's all of these open-ended questions that we still need to get answered, they are impossible to meet. So, what you will see when you get this is something from me that just says, "The board hereby resolves to delegate authority to its board president, consistent with the prior authority granted to seek clarity from the Attorney General regarding MCL 3901280G, to request from all appropriate authorities an extension for the August 1st and September 1st deadlines imposed through the aforementioned legislation." So, basically, this would give myself the authority to direct the department to seek, seek some extended deadlines from the Legislature based on the fact that we, we still have some unanswered, unanswered questions. And here it comes.
So, so, we're going to ask the Legislature to extend the, okay, but that doesn't necessarily mean that they're going to do it. We're just going to ask and see if they're going to be a silo with us.
That's right. We're, we're going to make a request. It doesn't mean they're going to do it.
Do you want to outline any of the, I mean, I don't want to get into it too much, but really doesn't have to do with the, I mean, even if we wanted.
but really doesn't have to do with the essay plan. I mean, even if we wanted to, but there's a lot of questions about clarity of the law. It's very confusing. It was written at three in the morning. A lot, it was amended a lot at, at three in the morning. So it doesn't make sense. There's that one commission that's still in the law that's not in the necessarily functioning. There's all kinds of problems. It's bad. Is it the essay issue that we couldn't even amend our essay plan and go through the process if we wanted to? And so is that going to put billions of dollars in jeopardy? I mean, there's, I don't know, is that kind of a couple of them? Okay. There's enough issues like that.
Correct. There's, there's, there's the question of, you know, as of now, we have, we will have two accountability systems that contradict each other. So that's a question that needs to be answered. So those are the types of things that, that we need to look at and we need some guidance, some legal guidance on that. And until we have it, it's, it's really difficult for the department to be able to move forward.
Are you suggesting to add that?
No, no, I just wanted to clarify why we're doing this. Which is fine. I mean, I'd rather just repeal it, except for the repeal of 1280C. I mean, I'd rather that be a resolution, but if you feel this is the right direction.
This is a, a direction.
Okay, yeah.
Leave it at that. So I will make.
I'll make the motion to approve the resolution as presented.
So we have a motion. We have support.
Yes.
And so do we have any discussion?
I, I have a question. So when is their proposed date to initiate this?
The first one is August 1st this year.
Okay, they want to initiate it August 1st.
The first, the first is to have the statewide system of accountability measurements developed by August 1st and letter grades assigned by September 1st of this year, 2019.
For tests that haven't even been taken yet.
The next school year.
No, this year.
This year.
Oh, yeah, okay.
For this.
It's ridiculous.
And summer, August and September. August 1st, September 1st.
Yeah, well, it'll be the next school year.
No, it'll be based on testing that's going to happen in the next few weeks.
Okay.
Then rank right away.
Okay, so how are you going to request this?
We will send a formal letter to members of the legislature.
Which ones? All of them?
The Chair of Education Committee for House and Senate.
And then do we ask them for a timeline? Do we say to them, we need a response by such and such a date? If, if the window is so, so short, are we going to request a timeline? Have, have you thought about what you're going to say yet?
Uh, we haven't gotten into the weeds of it, but, um, yeah, I think that would make sense.
Along the line of Lupe's question, so there, there was the question of how do you want to continue to communicate? That came up downstairs. Are we going to, is there any way that we can give our resolutions to some of those folks who were there or at least invited today to keep them apprised of?
In the loop of what we're trying to do and why? That's a good idea because I, I think we're not communicating with each other and, and if we want, this is something that we're real passionate about, let's start with this one and send it to the people that were there, at least they were present today. Plus, the leadership that you're talking about, I don't think it would hurt.
It's a, as a follow-up to our luncheon today, the Board took action. We wanted to keep you aware of it. You know, thank you for coming today. It was a wonderful conversation, the first of, we're hoping more opportunities for us to talk about education, partner together, make some policy changes, support each other in our efforts to improve education in Michigan.
Yeah, and, and even state that, you know, it was stated in the meeting that how can we work together?
Right.
You know, remind them of that. Well, this is one way.
The question was asked, how can we work together? Here's one way that we can work together. We're letting you know about.
This is how we talk to them and a lot of them just don't know that we're talking to them because not everybody gets this. Our statements and our resolutions.
Well, that, um, make some active partners in this work. Bring them on board and make some active partners. Okay. All right. Any more discussion? All right, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries.
I, I have a question. For, to, to the, the authority, to the authority, whatever. It, it, isn't it true that, that the President is already the representative of the Board? So do we have to give you more authority because you already, it's understood that you are the representative and the voice for the Board?
Uh, well, I'm only the voice for the Board so long as the Board has agreement on what they want me to be the voice of. So in the interest of transparency and clear direction to me, it's helpful to have these, uh, formal approval taken so that I know exactly what it is I'm representing.
So when you're, when you're called by the media to state, well, what do you think about the A through F?
Well, if it's the question, what do I think, then I can speak on behalf of myself. If the question is, what does the Board think, then I have to know what the Board's position is.
And typically, that's, a lot of times, it's already a statement.
Exactly, yeah. However, if they ask me, what does the Board think on some obscure, off-the-wall, I would say, I can't answer that question. I can tell you what I think, but the Board hasn't discussed this, so I can't speak for the Board.
Yeah, well, and this issue is something that we have all agreed in, that we want not to accountability system. So I, I just don't understand the authority to the authorities because you already are representative for whomever the President is of the Board.
Well, let's just say this. I don't want to do something and then have the Board come back and say, you misrepresented us. I would rather, before I do anything, get the support of the Board.
Okay. Hey, Marty, you got the snow days.
All right, yeah. Snow days. So this morning, House Bill 4206, introduced by Representative Frederick, passed out of the House Education Committee. And what that does is it allows the state superintendent to, um, approve for given days beyond the nine, the six that are in law, then she, he or she can agree to do three more. But then this bill says that if there's an instance where the Governor announces a, or declares a state of emergency, that the state superintendent also can forgive those. And this year, there have been two statewide. There was another one, I think she declared in Ionia County. But it, it doesn't specifically, the bill doesn't specifically say, you know, this year and this many, this. It just allows the superintendent to forgive those days or count those days as, as a school day. Also in that bill that passed out of committee today, there's language that says if a school, right now, a school has to have 75% attendance in order to count that day toward instruction to get a full day of pay, of state aid. If they're below, if they're below the 75% currently, then they get prorated, their state aid is prorated to the percentage that they had attendance. What this bill does, the language says that, that if there's a day where there could be a snow day declared, that if the attendance is 60%, that they get credit for the full day. Because what's happening is some school districts are saying, we're going to be, we're going to be below 75%. We're just going to call the day. When maybe 65% of kids could have shown up, they just close the whole school down. So what this does is it allows school districts to open for those students who are able to attend if it's above 60%. So that's what the bill does. It passed out of committee this morning. It now goes, there's a new process in the House of Representatives where, after it goes out of a standing committee, then it goes to the House Ways and Means Committee for their review and approval, and then it goes to the floor. So now that, that bill passed the, passed the House Education Committee, now goes to the House Ways and Means Committee. So that's where that is.
So, so, so is this bill, um, something that the legislature thinks it's an emergency? It's a, a very important one urgency? And they're going to move on it, you think?
Yes, they're getting, right. They are getting, um, informed by their local school districts that many school districts have gone beyond the nine days that are currently allowed by law and six plus three by the superintendent's approval. They're going beyond that. And as they are trying to, um, schedule the, the days beyond there to, to get the 100, 1,098 hours and 180 days, they want to make sure that, you know, what the actual days they have to make up. And if they can get the two days that have been declared emergency, get those counted as school days, then those are two less days that they will have to make up later. So there is, this is urgent from a local school district standpoint, yes.
Does the bill tell them how to make up the time?
No. No.
It's going to be local control or there's going to be another bill?
Local control. There is talk about, um, another bill or other language that would allow, um, school districts the flexibility to, to add hours to the day instead of having, having to add days if those hours, if the hours are in 30-minute increments. So that a school district could not add five minutes at the end of the day. But that, the bill has not moved that, that language has not moved yet, but there's discussion of that.
Five-minute increments, you said?
That was done before. Yeah.
I did it. Yeah. When I was teaching, we did that. Five minutes at the end of each hour.
Okay.
Yeah.
So two questions that I have. One is, um, I was just hearing that when the legislature looked a little bit closer, they found out that it was a week that the Governor had actually, um, declared the emergency for the week versus a few days. Is that, I don't, one of the legislators mentioned that, so I don't know. And then I don't know how that would impact.
That is, that is true. I, I learned that last week as well, is that the state of emergency was for two days. It was for Wednesday and Thursday, but when the Governor signs, signed the executive directive, it was for the entire week, beginning the 28th and going through Saturday, the 2nd. And so our understanding is that it would be for the full five days for districts that use those five days.
Okay. So then that will be able to be incorporated into that. Okay.
Yes.
So then the, the other question that I have, and I don't know, I don't think we've mentioned that and I had talked to you about this, Sheila, was the questions, I'm digging some of the questions up around extending the, the assessment window.
Yes.
Knowing that the M step, knowing that the SAT was more set in stone, but the M step, and I know you were exploring those options.
So Andy Middlestead contacted the vendors. We are still waiting for a response from the vendors as to, is it possible that you can extend the time? And if so, then what is the cost to the state? So we have, we have looked at all of the other implications and the last one now is, is it possible? Because the vendors have contracts with other states, so can they extend our testing window? Because we're not asking to shift it, we're asking to extend it. And then if so, what would the cost be to the state?
Okay.
So we're waiting for Andy to give us those answers.
Okay, and so the.
And as of yesterday, we didn't have answers.
Okay, so they asked that I was hearing was like two weeks?
Yeah, they were, they were asking for two weeks. Um, I'm not real comfortable with the two weeks. Um, I'm more comfortable with one week getting us to the end of May rather than going into June when we know that kids aren't going to be as focused on instruction.
Okay.
And so I'm leaning more towards one week rather than two weeks. And it's more likely that we would get a yes answer from the vendor, asking for one week than asking for two weeks.
Are you saying April? Because I'm, I'm seeing like April 26th as we're starting now and then moving to May 10th.
But remember, there's another testing window at the end of the year.
Okay.
The one that starts and ends, I believe it's, ends at May 24th and we're looking at having it extend to the end of May, which I believe is the 31st. Could be. I could have my days mixed up, but.
I'm, I'm seeing from one of the superintendents, the 26th to the.
Well, there's two testing windows. One at the, there's a, because you, you test third, fifth and eighth grade in high school and then you test the other grades in the other testing window. So we would be adding a week to both testing windows.
Okay, okay.
Anything else on snow days?
That's all I have.
Are there going to be any more?
They're cold.
Oh, my gosh. It's Michigan, Pam. We don't know. We've had snow days in April before, early April.
Who was the Regional Teacher of the Year said that their school is off today because of snow.
Oh, today? That was yesterday.
Up in the northern lower.
And potentially tomorrow because of icing, so.
So it's not over until it's over.
In Sheboygan this winter, 11 consecutive days that Sheboygan schools were closed due to inclement weather. Very unusual. And we have over, I'm going to ask Kyle, 500-plus waivers this year? Five?
That's no, did you create a lot of work?
About twice as many as we typically have.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll, we'll go on to the, the SBE legislative priority list. These are the, uh, priority list that you all told us that you wanted us to, uh, do some research on, input and study and all that. So, um, we, we try to get some from each one of you that turn something in. So Marty's going to take over educators' evaluation and so on.
Yeah, so the educator evaluation, there are bills right now to, um, if you remember at the end of the last session, there were, there was legislation to change the law, which currently says evaluations have to consist of 40% of assessment scores. And it's up from 25. So there was a bill last session to keep it at 25 and that did not get passed by the end of the session. So the bill's reintroduced this year, this session, to take it down to 25%. And those are being discussed. They have not been taken up in, in any committee yet, but we know that that is a priority of the Board and we'll be keeping close, uh, close watch on those bills. And I know there is interest in that. School safety and school culture, there are bills, um, it kind of goes to the resolution that, that we have prepared too. There are, there are bills that are on school safety. Um, let me get my list here. 4216, superintendent could not issue a teaching certificate unless the individual completes at least one hour of training on bullying prevention. 4200 is, would modify the penalties for carrying a concealed pistol in prohibited areas. And 4201 would update the sentencing guidelines to reflect proposed changes in 4200, which is the previous bill. So those are, those are bills that have been introduced so far. And I know that the resolution that we discussed in the Legislative Committee that has come up also talks about dignity in schools and school safety and culture. And it was based on some, a presentation at the February Board Meeting. And so I'll toss it back to Lupe.
Okay, so you have the resolution in front of you that we, the committee, uh, three of us were present. So we, um, passed this resolution to bring it to you for consideration. And so I'm hoping that all of you saw this resolution, but it, it, it's, it's also based on a presentation that was made by ACLU last, at the last meeting and, and our discussions about school safety. And I think this is one of the priority lists that, that Nikki brought up to, as a priority, in the priority list of the State Board. So one of the, the, have you noticed, one of our, of our goals is to be proactive and not reactionary all the time. So we want to be proactive and, and introduce different things, recommend different things. So, uh, and this is one of those that would fall into that goal. So do you need to look through this? Or, because what, what I would like to do, because Nikki has an, an additional recommendation as to what, and not, another whereas. And then she's got a recommendation to add, and safety to the, therefore be resolved. So Sheila, maybe we should make a motion to accept this resolution first and then maybe Nikki, at that point, could make a friendly amendment and add her recommendation.
I think what we do is we. I think what we do is we vote on the friendly amendment. Then if the vote is yes, then we add it to the resolution with the friendly amendment. I have the resolution here. I go either way.
Well, I would like to make a motion to...
Adopt the resolution?
Yes.
Okay.
First, and then...
And then we will amend it with the friendly amendment.
And then we entertain the friendly amendment.
Gotcha. Okay.
Okay.
So...
Okay, so I'm...
Do I have a motion to adopt the resolution on dignity in schools?
I would like to make the motion.
Motion. Do I have support?
I move for the friendly amendment.
First, we're voting to adopt the resolution.
I support.
We're not voting to adopt it?
No.
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 Motion. Support?
Chris.
Okay. So we have a motion and we have support. All those in favor signify by discussion. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I forgot the discussion part.
Yes.
Well, no, and then if there's any amendment, you have to take that first before you make a...
Thank you.
Make a vote.
Now we'll have discussion.
If we're in discussion, I do have a discussion item before amendment. I mean, the whole idea of disparate impact is theory is, I mean, I'm just learning a little bit about it, but it's a big controversy. I mean, it means that, you know, and we have sex included here, so that if, you know, if there's, if boys are more causing problems in the disciplinary, you can't discipline them if the outcome is going to be more boys get disciplined than girls. That's what disparate, you know, that's an example of disparate impact theory. And so, you know, it's not, it's outcomes that, so I mean, I have a concern with that. I have concern with, you know, I don't, I understand the second paragraph. I certainly agree with the issues that ACLU brought forward and that we need, you know, we need to make sure that people have due process in all of these processes. That's absolutely, you know, and there should be no discrimination in that area whatsoever. But when you start introducing the idea of disparate impact, it's a very controversial subject, actually. I have a real problem with that resolution on that, especially on that basis.
You're talking about the first one? The first word?
Well, the last, the resolved.
Therefore be it resolved.
Yeah. It did not have a disparate impact on students based on their race, sex.
Well, in the first one, we used disproportionate.
Right. Well, that one, I just didn't, disproportionate impact, I understand that on race and color, because the second paragraph addresses that, but then the other items, I don't know. Is there a disproportionate impact based on national origin, sex, LGBTQ status, and disability status? I don't know. I don't, I've looked, I've been looking, I can't find anything that says that it is. Maybe it is, I don't know.
You know, I can't remember where it's from now, but it's been repeated so many times that doesn't mean, I shouldn't look at the source, but about disability status, that there is a higher proportion of those kids that are...
Yeah. It might be. Or sex, does that mean boys? Or, I don't know what that means.
This is just everything that's covered by title.
Gender.
Yeah, it generally means gender, yeah. Then you have...
So which, so does that mean boys are disproportionately impacted or girls are disproportionately impacted? Or...
Well, I think what it's saying is just don't enact policies that are, you know, disproportionately impacting students based on any particular area. I don't think that means that you can't discipline, you know, if you have two boys in trouble and one girl, that you have to single out one boy so that you're being...
That's what disparate impact means, is that if you have a policy that results in more boys being disciplined than girls, then it's discriminatory, it's bad.
But if it's based on the same action.
Right.
No, it's just, it's just the outcome.
Well, I'm familiar just with like employment, when they talk about disability, about disparate impact. So you could have rules, but if they're found to be valid, if there's some validity to them, if there's truth, that like they did engage in some behavior that was to be suspended. But if it's, if something, so you make an initial argument that looks at the impact, and there's these formulas under civil rights law, it has to be a substantial disparity, not just a few more and they're counting beans, like it has to be exactly equal. But then you counter it by saying, you know, you're saying this is discriminatory, then the employer gets to say, well, wait a minute, there's valid reasons for this happening that are related to the circumstances, and they get a chance to rebut that. So what I'm saying is that there is this process when we talk about disparate impact, at least under civil rights laws, I understand it, it's a back and forth. So you make the initial thing, it looks at statistically, but then the employer gets a chance to rebut it and say it happened for valid reasons, and that is, you know, and that's kind of where it's, but maybe we need more of a...
I want all kids to be treated the same, you know? I mean, I don't know.
And I think the resolution kind of, even though maybe we wouldn't necessarily agree with some of the issues as they are in certain areas, you know, in full, I feel like the resolution is speaking specifically to exactly that, a commitment to dignity. Also a commitment to follow laws that maybe we would even not even campaign to have in place, but that we are willing to follow the law. So I don't know.
If you guys want to go ahead, I mean, I'll probably just pass because I'm uncomfortable with that, like that word, that phrase especially, but...
Is this one where you would also have to look at the intent of the law before you fell into any type of litigation?
That's what I'm thinking.
I mean, it's a really, you know, anyway, we don't win a lot.
Yeah.
Because you...
Yeah.
You have to prove intent.
And that's how I'm interpreting that phrase, that we're going to help school districts enact policies that, and that policy should not have a disparate impact. But you're right, Pam, you would have to prove that the policy kind of set that up to begin with. Now that's how I interpret that phrase, Bud.
Well, you could say you've got a policy, and boys are more rambunctious and they get in trouble more, so that's a bad policy. You can't have that kind of disciplinary policy. Because you know going in that boys fidget more than girls. I don't know, I'm not sure that's the case, but if that were the case...
I've seen some pretty egregious cases, and they've gone nowhere because of the intent thing. I don't know, just reading this, and really, it's my first time reading it, but just reading it, this is a statement that would hopefully help the reader or the user to give pause to make sure that nothing that they're doing would be causing disparate impact. I think that as far as it's standing up somewhere in law, I don't see it on, you know, well...
Or taking away dignity to that individual that they're valued essentially.
But I think we can vote.
And something similar, like this policy is, resolution is already used in some school districts in our state, and maybe in other states too. And so I'm very supportive. I think dignifying every student with respect and that safe place situation in the school, the more we say it, the more we remind people, the more it's apt to happen. Right now, the bullying situation is so out of hand, and I just had my friend's son commit suicide because of that, about three weeks ago. So in my mind, the more we enforce it, the more we remind school personnel, the employees are dignifying the student, that's, as far as I'm concerned, as board members, our main focus should be the safety of the student first and foremost. And I think this resolution speaks to that. And so I'm speaking in behalf and for the motion and why we brought it as a committee to, for, to the board, because there's so many cases right now, as we're sitting right here in the schools, and people are crying out, you know, what do I do? So we as a board are being proactive to create that safety net for students out there and remind adults, you know, you have to dignify the student.
What if we just get rid of the first paragraph? Because the second paragraph speaks to more statistical or more data that talks about...
You mean the U.S. Department of Education?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's very...
Yeah, keep that.
That's very relevant because...
Yeah, yeah, keep that. I'm saying get rid of the one before it, because I don't know if we have the, it sounds like we don't know if that's true or not.
That?
I mean, it's a good guess, but I don't know if it's...
I would leave that.
The first paragraph?
I would leave the first paragraph, but maybe to Tom's point, maybe take out the word sex. So it's not a male-female thing, maybe, but I would definitely leave in the rest of the paragraph.
Yeah, but it is true that, well, maybe we should say gender instead of sex, and because it is true, there's...
Well, we just saw a presentation that said...
And you're going to speak to that in your, you're speaking to that, that you're talking about more African-American students that are being assaulted.
Yes, the second paragraph speaks clearly to African-American disproportionate, and it gives like statistical, it gives evidence of it, that I would, I'm not questioning that. I mean, my guess is that LGBT are bullied more, but it doesn't, I don't know if they're arrested more or expelled more. I don't know those, that data.
Yeah, that's true, and I have heard that we can't find, that there is difficulty finding that data. I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
What about disability students? Are they...
Yeah, they are.
I would imagine that they are.
I understand.
All of these, all of these, all of these, my, race, gender, or sex, whatever you want to call it, LGBTQ, all of these groups will tell you that. All of this, and even age, don't discriminate against me.
It's not, it doesn't say discrimination, though. It says school-based arrests.
No, no, I know. Right.
Yeah.
Interesting, I would even move away from the need for data, because the thing is, is that, again, even though I may not always come to the table with complete agreement about some of the policies that we have in certain areas of this, just making this statement that it's reasonable to not, to dignify everyone is a valuable endeavor. So here's what I would say, just add the word "may" in front of disproportionately.
Oh, yeah.
You're qualifying it.
In what paragraph?
Oh, in the first paragraph.
First paragraph.
Oh.
May disproportionately impact.
Likely disproportionately. May.
In our schools, and may?
Yeah.
Okay, well, we have to, we have to follow some parliamentary procedure.
I'd like to move a friendly amendment as highlighted.
Oh, you can...
I don't like the "may."
Okay.
Well, we don't know.
I'm sorry.
We're not there yet.
Okay.
We can vote that down if we want. But right now, we have the friendly amendment.
So we're still on the discussion?
Okay.
Yeah.
So we can't use amendment to the...
To finish my point about the "may," the only reason I don't like it is because I like the fact that it takes a firm stance on these issues.
But it may have been correct.
It may or may not. But...
No, it's, I'm just trying to be accurate. So what we're trying to say is, we don't know that LGBTQ students are arrested disproportionately at school. We don't know that that's, I don't know that this is accurate. I don't know where this information's coming from. If you qualify it, then it sounds reasonable, but we're not making a solid statement that may be inaccurate. That's all I'm saying.
And the reason why I go, I can go along with that and kind of like reverse my thoughts is I remembered a conversation that I was having with someone, where it's like for some race, there is some data, but for some other populations, there is not that...
That data.
Available, the availability of data. And I definitely hear what you're saying about Nikki about not necessarily always having to have data, but there is not availability of data for everyone. So that's why I reverted or yielded to Michelle about that second paragraph. And those were some questions that I've asked.
Should we just...
Okay.
I'm thinking "may," yeah, add the "may."
Well, she has made a motion before all of this, she's made a motion, a friendly amendment.
Does she need support for that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I support the friendly amendment.
Nikki has made a friendly amendment to the resolution, and we have support from Judy, and now discussion on the friendly amendment.
Why don't we ask her to speak to her?
That would be the discussion, please, yes.
Yes.
I went to a, MSU has a speaker series going on right now. I have to log back in so that I can tell you what it was called, but it was at the MSU Center in Detroit, Resisting Sexual Violence Through a Racial Justice Lens Toward Inclusive Transformation. There was a lot of really good information at that meeting, and just as I was reading through the resolution on dignity, I wasn't able to make it to the meeting in February, I thought that this would be a good addition.
Question?
Can you kind of talk about what transformative justice is?
Yeah. So it's something that they were talking about at this speaker series, it being essentially like something that kind of works with restorative justice, that you're trying to identify practices that prevent, so preventative type of thought process. So as we move forward at the table...
My concern was it was where Title IX seems to be headed, which is you're putting a complainant and a respondent in a room and letting them like fight it out after an assault, which to me is kind of concerning, but that seems to be the direction that they're heading.
Yeah.
So governing it right now, but still, I think it goes beyond even the complaint, if you will, or the resolution of the complaint, but back to the problem and trying to really change.
I'm for prevention.
So there was, I cannot remember her name, I have to go back and email her, but she's from MSU, and she said that that's what they're essentially discussing right now, is those types of practices. I think reporting it is one of them.
Okay. Any more discussion?
Okay. So are we going to vote on the main motion with the friendly amendment? Because there's some other words that have been recommended.
You have to vote on the amendment.
Yeah, okay.
So we're voting on the amendment?
Okay.
Actually, if it's a friendly amendment and the maker of the motion accepts it, you don't even have to vote on a friendly amendment.
Okay.
So if the maker accepts a motion, a friendly amendment.
So you may have to accept me.
Yeah, I do, I do accept.
All right.
The friendly amendment.
Okay. And then there's also the discussion of adding the word "may" to the first paragraph.
See, but how can we vote on it together? Because some, I'm not in favor of "may," and others are not, so do we vote on this and then come back? And how do we do that?
That would have to be an amendment to add that word "may."
Yeah, if it's not friendly to the maker of the motion.
Another friendly amendment?
No, 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 it wouldn't be friendly. It would just be an amendment.
Because you don't accept it.
Because you don't accept it.
So it's an amendment.
Friendly amendment on Nikki.
Okay, why do we vote on it now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Before we vote.
Okay.
So you would vote on adding the word "may"?
In front of...
You don't have to vote on this because you accepted it, so it's in.
See, but now we have to vote on the most...
On "may."
Not, okay, "may."
Yes. So now we are voting on adding, so now we will vote on adding the word "may" to the first paragraph.
Do we have a motion?
So first of all, sorry, do we have a motion? Sorry, motion? And do we have support?
Support.
Is there any more discussion? All right.
Should we try to get data?
I'm sorry, pardon?
Should we try to get data about these things? No?
Let me get data.
About, well, let me...
Or does it just not exist? Is that what you're saying?
That's my understanding, is that it does not exist. I don't know, Kyle, can we consult?
Yes, of course. That's why they're here.
I was just... That is focused, certainly, on race.
Yeah, because I've looked...
A lot of national...
But if you go to speak to the LGBTQ community, they'll tell you that they're discriminated more than anybody else. But, but if you go to speak to the LGBTQ community, they'll tell you that they're discriminated more than anybody else. All of these, all of these groups will tell you the same thing. So there must be data somewhere.
Are they arrested?
Yeah, it doesn't say discrimination. It says arrest.
Yes, but I don't think, I don't think all of these pertain to all groups. I think maybe suspensions, maybe the Latinos, I don't think all of these things pertain to one group.
We're having a 20-minute discussion over the word "may."
Okay, so, so.
"May, may, may" is the word.
We are voting on adding the word "may" after "and" and in front of disproportionately. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Okay, motion carries. So now we will vote on the resolution that includes a friendly amendment and the word "may."
Just so you know, the resolve, which is the guts of any resolution, is what's resolved. The disparate impact is what I am gonna pass on, because I think it's a very loaded and very controversial subject.
Okay, there was, I misquoted something here in my, in my, what I wrote for the, the yellow part. Do you see where I said "strike out" and "safety"? And I misread that. I should've said "add" and "safety," and therefore it'd be resolved. Can, can you read that line, please, with the?
So we're going to the last paragraph.
Right.
On the resolution. And we want to add the word "and safety," and could you tell us where?
Nikki's gonna tell us.
Maybe I'm gonna tell you.
That improves school climate and safety and do not have a disparate impact?
Yes, also add "safety" after "school climate."
Yes, so it would say enact policies that improve school climate and safety.
Oh, yeah.
And do not have a disparate.
Do not have a disparate. And safety.
So we have to take a motion to add the words "and safety." First of all, do we have a motion?
She's a move.
Second, yes, discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Now we go back to the resolution. The resolution with the word "may," whereas suspension expulsions and school-based arrests are often used in our schools, and "may disproportionately." Going to the end of the resolution. We didn't talk about whereas the friendly amendment, where that paragraph would be added.
Just before.
Therefore be it resolved.
Just after the other whereas.
The last whereas.
Okay. Okay. So then we will add the friendly amendment in front of therefore be it resolved. And in the last paragraph, the sentence that says helping school districts enact policies that improve school climate and safety. Yes.
Can we just do "safety"? Because it's, now it's "and safety," and do not. So it should just be comma.
Safety, comma, safety.
There's a comma after "safety."
Get the word "and," remove "and," and just do "improve school climate, comma, safety."
And do not have, yeah, yeah, that sounds better.
I feel like we're all like, "Hey, Judy."
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Do what?
I already did. You have one.
For all of these changes, okay, thank you.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I made it in consent of second.
Okay, do we have any more discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Abstentions?
Aye, or abstain, or, yeah, pass.
Pass, okay. All right, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you for doing that. I, I really feel good about it, because, again, our committee wants to be proactive and, and get away from being reactionary and be leaders in, in the legislative agenda of the state. Okay, Marty, are you done?
Sure.
There's not, nothing else?
Well, other than the fact that, you know, the governor did propose her executive budget. And I shared with all of you the, the major speaking points and the, and the budget narrative itself. So you can go over that yourself, or you can, we can discuss here.
So, I have a question. Sheila?
Yes, I'm sorry, Lupe.
To Marty?
Yes.
So how does, how will her proposed budget, how will it, what's the process?
So the process?
Are they gonna dissect it and vote on different things?
The governor proposes, and the legislature disposes. And so the governor proposed her budget. Now, both the House and the Senate discussed the budget, every part of the budget, including K-12 and, and school aid and MDE and all the other departments. And then there are subcommittees that meet and discuss the budget. Then each, the House and the Senate come up with their versions and amend it and pass it. And then it gets passed over to the other houses. And then if they are different, then it goes to a conference committee. And then a conference committee agrees to a final budget. And then that goes to the governor for her signature and vetoes.
So she can do line item?
She can do, yes.
They won't do line item. They will pack, do the whole package?
The legislature passes, right, the conference committee is, is the agreed-to budget for the legislature. And then that gets passed by both Senate and the House, and then that goes to the governor for her action.
And she can line item veto.
Veto.
She doesn't have to veto. Yeah, she doesn't have to veto the whole thing.
Whatever she wants to keep or throw away.
So that creates more of a give and take, I think.
What's, what's the buzz? What's, you know, what we're kinda like thinking about?
I haven't heard much yet about the school aid budget. I mean, obviously, the, you know, the, the oxygen is being taken up with the gas tax.
Yeah, gas tax.
I know that we have been presenting to the Appropriations Committee just a general discussion on what the MDE's budget is. And then the K-12 budget is separate, and the Budget Office presents on the school aid budget. And they've done that already, in I think the House, maybe tomorrow. And so, and then they go from there.
My understanding from the governor's budget is that, so the gas budget would raise money for the, for the roads. And then that would move, help me, Judy.
Right, the way it was at least explained at the.
Meeting yesterday.
Meeting last night was the, if the gas tax would pass, then that would raise money for the roads, which would then allow that.
General fund money.
General fund money.
For higher ed.
Yeah, higher ed, to be left in general fund, and they wouldn't have to go to school aid and pull it out of school aid.
So then, see how all those dominoes would drop? The money that's going, the 900 million that's going to. So they're all tied together. So the gas tax is actually linked to the education, yeah, budget. As was explained to us, there was a meeting at Padma Kupa's. Padma Kupa put something on in the new rap over in Troy, across an area. And she had a number of people speaking on a panel explaining all this.
So where'd the last gas tax go to then? Because we've got all these like ideas of how this gas tax will impact us. Where was, I mean, what, what did we attack, what did we do with it?
Sure, it went to the roads. It's restricted funding. It's restricted funding that goes to roads. Whether that was an offset.
If I understood correctly, on To the Point, Channel 8 in Grand Rapids, Rick Albon. And, and he always had a Republican and a Democrat. And if I understood correctly, the Republicans said that that money that you just talked about does not come to fruition until 2019 or 2020 or something. So they just have to wait, because that money is gonna be there.
How do we know it's not enough? How do we know we need more?
I don't know. It's never enough.
The roads are in total mess. They can estimate the cost of the repairs to the bridges and the roads. And they can know how much is coming in based on, you know, Lisa Paul Park.
Governor Snyder did have a commission, I believe, two or three years ago.
Yes.
To study roads and bridges.
We tried to pass something.
Yeah, they did pass something, but.
I mean, they took it to the voters.
Right.
What, three years ago, four years ago?
Didn't we pass that? We didn't pass that?
Not the, no. Then the legislature passed something.
Something. With a tiebreaker.
Right, right. But that hasn't been enough.
That's what is going to, for the long-term investment. That wasn't enough.
Yeah, yeah, it was, it was a stopgap measure.
I guess not.
Just like we.
Okay.
Any other questions for Marty?
Thank you, Marty.
Okay, thank you, Marty.
Thank you.
Tiffany? A report on NASB yet?
So I did request a transference of information. I did not receive any. But I know that, I spoke with you earlier, and you are going to connect me with someone. In addition to that, I will be attending the Legislative Conference in April. So that will be the 7th through the 9th. We have a board meeting on the 9th. So I will return on the evening of the 8th to be here for the board meeting. And then I will be able to give an update of what we speak about at the conference and the policies nationally. I'm excited about that.
Wonderful. We look forward to hearing it.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then we'll move on to the consent agenda. May I please have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Supported?
I'll support.
Okay, moved and supported. Any discussion?
Yes, I do.
Yes, Tom?
Well, I mean, this is before, so I mean, particularly the area of transgender. I mean, the studies, I'm looking at one where there's 12 studies. Eighty percent of the kids end up identifying, who claim to be transgender, end up identifying as the sex of their birth. So I, I mean, I don't know how much support, I don't know if this support for a lifestyle that many of them will eventually get out of, you know, is harmful, is helpful, I don't know. And so I'm, I'm concerned about this, and we'll be voting no.
Anyone else? Seeing none? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, motion carries. Comments by State Board of Education members? Are there board members who wish to share comments at this time during the board meeting? I have. Lupe, Judy? Tom?
Okay, so I, I want to remind you that March 31st is Cesar Estrada Chavez's birthday. And Cesar was a, is an American labor leader. And he organized the farm workers. And if you know, as a young girl, I used to come from Texas to the state of Michigan as a farm worker. So I am the chairperson of the committee to honor Cesar Chavez in Grand Rapids, Michigan. And what I work for in my committee, my team and I work for, is to educate more and more Hispanics. So we raise money for scholarships. We have just finished endowing in the second university, Grand Valley State University. So now we have endowed GRCC and now Grand Valley State University. And in the meantime, Deport started their Cesar Chavez Scholarship, and Aquinas started their Cesar Chavez Scholarship. We will go to another university now and endow there. So I have been inviting you to our activities for seven years. And our activity for the social justice activities is coming up this Thursday. Judy's gonna go, so I'm really excited. I will get to introduce her as a new board member in, at the community gathering. We have three events in one day. We're, I think we're super crazy. But anyway, we have a social justice march, and we walk down the street, Cesar Chavez Boulevard. And Cesar Chavez School is there, the Hispanic Center is there. So it's the hub of the Hispanic community in Grand Rapids. So we'll walk to a Christian school, a church, actually, Potter House, maybe you have heard of Potter's House. So we'll go in there, have a community gathering. In our community gatherings, or, or attended by the leadership from the city, from universities, from police department, from everybody, and a lot of students. So we get about 1,000 people out at 11:00 in the morning. We don't walk far, because the weather, you never know. And, and the weather is gonna be good, but they say it's gonna rain, so we'll see. Maybe it won't rain the 30 minutes we walk. Anyway, so at the community gathering, we will introduce Judy. If you remember, we honored Kathy that one year. So it, and Dr. Zilei used to attend the events too. And so then we go to a unity luncheon, and the restaurant closes for us, and, and we have the luncheon there. So, but Cinco de Mayo is coming up. You didn't, you cannot make it to this, May the 6th. And that's a very, very festive time. Everything is educational. Everything is teaching the, the students to get on the, on the stage and speak. And it's all about students, everything. And we, we cater to the little ones up to the university-level students. So Cesar had a lot of principles, and, and, you know, we in this board use many of them. We, time commitment, so commitment, determination, that we're gonna make a difference in education. Respect, this dignity, what, what do we call it? What is the name of our resolution? You know, is, is prove that we want to dignify all students in all places, no matter what they are, who they are. And so that's, that's important. And I could go on and on with the principles that Cesar used. So, so I'm very passionate about what he taught, and what, not only us as Hispanics, but his history is, belongs to everybody. He did it worldwide. He did a lot of things worldwide. So anyway, so as you go through this month, remember Cesar. And the reason why we celebrate his birthday before the 31st is because we want the students to participate before they go to spring break. So, anyway, so I'm real proud of, of what we do, behalf of, of his life and legacy, and what we do for people, especially students.
Thank you very much. And Judy?
I just wanted to let the board know that I was able to attend the first cross-section CTE meeting. Very impressed. If they are able to get through all those goals and all those objectives, they deserve some sort of an award. Scott was at that meeting along with Brian. So just wanted to let you know that I had been able to attend their first meeting. And it was good to listen to business people along with the school people. We learn from each other, and that was helpful. And while I did not speak on the discussion on Benton Harbor, most of you know around the table that I do have experience with school districts that are facing either potential CEOs or to the brink. And so if there's anything I can do to assist, just give me a call. I know this situation's different, but in some instances, it's also very much the same as the community begins to react to it. So I'm available if somebody wants to chat about that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Judy. And Tom?
Our friend Peter Green, who addressed this body a few months ago, had an excellent blog post that I, as a conservative, I get a lot of odd, you know, people see some of my posts, like on Facebook. I have a lot of conservative friends. They think it's kind of odd. But I post Peter Green's, I posted this, and got some good response on both sides. But, and I just wanted to quickly read. He mentions, it's called "Stop Talking About Student Achievement." Says, "But there's an even bigger issue, and that's the continued unquestioning use of these test scores as a proxy for the larger picture of student achievement and teacher effectiveness. It's a mistake repeatedly by countless education journalists, researchers, and policy wonks. It's an easy, it's a quick and easy shorthand, but it's inaccurate and misleading. We should stop, we should just stop. Instead of saying "Strategy X" was found to have a positive effect on student achievement, we should say "Strategy X helped raise test scores." Instead of saying "Technique Z led to improved reading by third graders," we should say "Technique Z led to improved reading test scores by third graders." It's not that we shouldn't discuss standardized test results, but we should stop pretending that they represent some larger truth. We should, we should call them by their name, not student achievement, or effective instruction, or high-quality school, but simply scores on the standardized test. By using lazy substitution, we end up like a tourist sitting beside the Grand Canyon, looking at a handful of pebbles, and imagining that those pebbles tell us everything we need to know about the vast, beautiful vista that we are not bothering to see." I thought it was tremendous. His, his. His blog is wonderful. That's all.
Thank you, Tom. I have Tiffany, and then I'm going to come over to Michelle.
I wanted to reiterate and expound upon something that I touched on earlier, which is, you know, I know that you work very hard and your staff works very hard to give well-thought-out presentations. And we get, you know, packed full of information, which is really good. We have so many issues in this state when it comes to education, and I don't want to just hear the, you know, positives. I want to hear the issues because we're all here to work together, even though we might not always agree on every single thing. We're all here to work together in concert to fix some major issues that we're having here in the state. And also, I would like to see, I know when we first got elected, there was a presentation here about innovative classroom, new curriculum idea, which I didn't totally agree with because that was all, you know, on the computer. But I would like to hear more presentations about innovative ideas of ways we can change the classroom and education and move it forward because we are stuck behind when it comes to how we educate here in Michigan. So I would really like to hear more case studies, more, you know, more things that we can possibly look at.
Okay. We'll take that into account as we plan future agendas. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michelle?
Yeah, I just wanted to, the Michigan Civil Rights Commission has been going around the state talking about, or having people testify and provide information on the intersection between education and discrimination. And I will be on a panel. I mean, there's a number of few, I think Vanessa is going to be there. There's a number of people from the department, as well as people in the community, different groups speaking about that. But I'll be speaking around the special education and how there's issues with discrimination to me based on our funding structure and the way we structure charter schools in the state. So, and that's going to be on the 25th. Trying to... Yeah, I'll send it to you. It's in McComb County.
It's in McComb.
Yeah. Well, I'm in the wrong month. Why isn't it here? It's the wrong month. Yeah, it's in McComb this time. So I will send it to you all.
Thank you.
Sure.
I'll do my best to vote for that one.
Okay.
Anyone else? Yes, Pam?
And it's because, you know, we do the public comments and then there's no one here when, you know, it's time to do the updates. But obviously, we did get an opportunity to speak to Benton Harbor, so that was good that they were able to sit here and hear us. So, you know, as Tiffany has pointed out, we do, we want to hear not necessarily the problems, but be able to be a part of the solution on the front end. It's not just, I understand why you want to hear the problems, to be on the front end, but then also, some of these districts are doing some clever things and we want to see them wiggle their way out of these issues such as, you know, Flint Community Schools. We know that there's a lot of work to be done there, but they, you know, and that's without even having the crisis. But the presentation that they provided, you know, I'm thankful that we were able to hear that during a public, the public comment section, but obviously, we need to hear that and more well heard out. And I hope that board members understand that because you hear the passion in Derek Lopez and, you know, what that district is trying to overcome and the many, many obstacles. And so how that, because it is, you know, has been seen as a problem, we see that, you know, there's the other districts that can learn from that. I gave the analogy of me trying to lose weight. I don't want to see someone who's, there's several of you, I won't even call your names, who's nice and thin lose weight. I want to see the person who's like me or bigger lose weight. But, you know, having those opportunities to see those things. So it's good to get the rosy picture, but we want to see the districts who are overcoming some huge, you know, real-life barriers. And that's not to say that some of these districts that we have seen are not doing that. So, and I think that the Flint Community Schools, I think the whole child approach, as you all know, speaks to Tom's thought of stop talking about, that he's pointed out today, stop talking about, you know, a student achievement, but look at how do we build up children and make sure that they have a meaningful future? You know, I think that the, just going back to the presentation, we didn't get a chance to get everything out that we wanted to get out on the university and college, that funding coming out of the School Aid Fund. But we all know that that funding, that deficit that we now bear, or our students bear, comes from the budget being rated and used for things that obviously many of us don't think should be used for. So I would like to hear more about the governor's budgets and hoping that we can find a way to be able to support that because we know that it would address this issue. But I think that that was, that was it for me.
And Pam, I did mention to Dr. Lopez that we would invite him back.
Okay.
At another time for a more extensive presentation and conversation with him.
One last thing, I'm sorry. Can I just?
No, you're done. You just had one.
No, I need to, I need to mention, you know, the summative scores came out since we've met. And I was, I was surprised, you know, as far as how the percentages, you know, were figured out. I think that is something that should come before this board and we should approve how the summative score, and it's not a summative grade, but our summative scores determine...
Summative index score?
Yeah, the index, school index. And then I just looked at one that's in a, you know, affluent area, a school, and I was struck that their growth was 100%. And I started asking, digging in and asking some of the staff. And they explained to me that growth is not how I thought it was defined. And I think the A to F law allows us to decide what, how to define growth. And growth is not, you know, a child that was at 20% and is now at 30% of proficiency, you know, or, you know, that's a growth to me. I mean, that, you know, but if it's not on a trajectory to get to proficiency, then it's not counted as somebody who's growing. Now, I know that, you know, proficiency, I mean, we all want, we want kids to read and write and all that, but I just, you know, conversely, in an F, in if a school, or if a student is at 95% efficient, proficient, and, you know, 70% is the bar, and they go down in a year. Let's say they go down to 85, you know, they're from 95 to 85, they're still considered proficient. And, you know, the teacher would be awarded because of the growth of that student, even though it was negative 10, because they're not on a trajectory necessarily to be in, out of proficiency or below proficiency. So it's a real unusual way of describing growth because I couldn't believe that the school could get 100% or like 90, you know, 100% in growth. Because I thought if you're up at the top, it's real hard to get that growth. But that's not how it's, that's not how growth is determined. And so, you know, growth, if they're at 95% and all of them, all the kids are probably not going to drop to 69, they're at 100% growth. I don't, it kind of really shook, I mean, it really is, so at any rate, we don't need to get into it now, but I do think that in the future, you know, board meetings, that we should really look at this because, you know, I mean, I can imagine, you know, if you're dealing with kids that are really below there and you've got to do, be a miracle worker on test scores. I mean, if you can, but they could grow and you get no credit for that. If they're, if they're growing pretty decently, actually, because if it's not a trajectory on some, you know, number that's grabbed out of the air and said, you got to get to that, then they're not, it's not counted as being successful as a teacher or as a school and all that. So I'm probably...
Sounds like a topic for future...
Not explaining it perfectly, but I just really was surprised.
But to be fair and so that there's no disproportionate, disparate treatment here, I'm going to just take another chance and speak.
Oh. No, yeah, that was, okay.
I'm going to try to tell you, I'm still trying to lose 10 pounds, so you...
So, I guess my question, and I hear you, Sheila, that we'll get a presentation on this, because I just want to know, with all of that thought that we gave to the dashboard, this thing looks just as shiny as the dashboard does. And so, and I do appreciate Vanessa calling us on a Sunday and going over it for us. I'm just wondering what thought went into that. I just remember all the thought that we went, that went into the parent dashboard that we saw. This, I did not see that above ground. I just got a question about it and that's what made me look at it. So that is a huge concern for me. And while we're on the issue of transparency, I'll just sneak one more in here for, around Benton Harbor that I forgot. With the CEO, if he's leaving this soon, I'm concerned with the grave decision, I mean, the very critical decisions that he's making. And maybe I made that point earlier today, but again, if they're leaving this soon and having that much influence at this point. So I just want to make, just drive that point home again, especially without the board being there. But I think I said it earlier, but I just wanted to say that again.
I appreciate hearing that. At the same time, I'm trying to look at providing stability and continuity within that district to get the district through the end of the school year. And being, allowing the initiatives that he has started and he is supporting to continue through the end of the school year. My goal is to ensure that there is as much continuity in the schools and in their central administration to get them through the end of the school year because it's really about the kids.
Exactly. I totally agree. And I'm good with us walking in that way, but what I'm concerned about is that we're leaving behind those elected residents, members of the community, board members that will be there. And then this person may or may not. And I guess just making sure that they're not, that the CEO is not doing something that's for job security, if that makes sense.
Yes, it does.
And I get the stability piece. I'm talking about the pieces where they're trying to sell themselves in a way or influence in a way that create, that's intended to create job stability.
I understand that.
One last thing to say. That Milken Teacher Award.
Yes.
For some reason, what stood out to me with what he said was, when he acknowledged his parents, that they taught him four specific things, resilience, commitment, work ethic, and how to have fun.
Yes.
So I just thought that was really neat, that when he had the opportunity to share with us what is exciting about where he's at in this award, that those four things are what sit out to him, that his parents taught him. So I'm going to take that home and I'm going to chew on it because that's, I mean, those four things are important.
I wrote them down too, Nikki.
Yeah.
I wrote them down because I think it's so special when a son or a daughter praises a mom or a dad to that level. I think it's so cool. Lot of respect.
And of course, all the fun that we have here every month.
Yeah, well, I want to thank you, Sheila, for conducting such a great meeting. And Marty, my right hand, and all the department for those fun work that you...
Okay, we're not done yet.
Oh, but I...
We're almost done.
Ms. Marilyn.
We're almost done.
We have future meeting dates. We have to have a motion to approve a special meeting of the State Board of Education on Friday, April 5th at 10:00 a.m. to review applications for the position of state superintendent. Friday, we have a motion and a support.
Support.
Support. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Please note that the board will be voting at this meeting to go into closed session during the April 5th meeting to review the applicants of individuals, excuse me, of individuals who have requested confidentiality as approved in Michigan compiled law, 15.268 Section 8F of the Open Meetings Act. Following the closed section, the board will return and they will report on their deliberations and then they will adjourn their meeting. So we'll start the meeting, go into closed session, come back, share the deliberations, and then adjourn the meeting. The meeting starts at 10 o'clock. Future meetings, in addition to April 5th, we have April 9th at 9:30 as a regular meeting. Tuesday, April, sorry, Tuesday, May 14th, 9:30 as a regular meeting. And if there are any topics other than the ones that were shared today that board members would like included on future meeting agendas, please let us know. And let us know as soon as possible because next week, we will begin working on finalizing the April 9th agenda meeting, agenda. If you are interested in a next, I know we talked about a series of presentations on school funding. If there's a specific topic on school funding that you would like next, please let us know and we can make those arrangements.
Can I tell you now?
Yes, you can. That's what I'm asking.
What I meant, so there's, a lot of people I'm finding don't know about the Community Renewal Tax Relief Act of 2000 and how it affects funding of charter schools. And this is the tax credit that gets like 30% hedge fund, it's what's attracting hedge fund managers and, you know, Wall Street to include charter schools and portfolios. I even mentioned it to David Arson when he was talking about the limitations on funding for charters. He wasn't aware of it. So I think it'd be great if we could have somebody who's knowledgeable about that tax credit and people who are taking advantage of that tax credit in, here in Michigan. If that's, I don't know if that information is available, but it would just be interesting to me to have, shine a light on that.
Is that federal?
It's a federal law. Clinton signed it.
Yeah.
And Trump, in the last tax bill, did not include it initially. And then a lot of people who take advantage of that credit got very upset and got it put back in. So it's been renewed, reauthorized year after year, but it initially came in in 2000. And it's for, it basically allows this huge tax credit and other tax schemes for to, if you are in considered underserved areas or high rural or urban, which is why charters tend to congregate in urban areas, is because there's a great financial incentive to do so. And that's, I think is interesting to learn more about.
Thank you. And Tiffany?
During the legislative luncheon, the senator mentioned that there are all of these federal dollars that schools are getting. I would like to know more about that so that we can, you know, answer questions when they come up. And specifically, what are those federal dollars allocated for?
Okay. All right. One else? Thank you. All right, so before we conclude, I would just like to thank our legislative committee for planning today's legislative luncheon, to our board members for being hosts and hostesses for the luncheon, and to the MDE staff who helped plan the luncheon, and to the MDE staff who helped plan today's board meeting, and for the staff members who presented and who stayed throughout the entire meeting. So thank you very much. And to our board for being engaged in such a...